All right, so this is the November 16th work session of the ZBA. If there are any members of the public who are attending, this is not, you will not have an opportunity to speak. This meeting is purely for a discussion by the members of the board. The first item on the agenda is the board's consideration of the FEIS for 416 Waverly Avenue, case number 1582018. All right, somebody who has something to say about give their comments on the FEIS or otherwise. Did Meg send comments? Did anybody, did Ashley or Brittany, did Meg send any comments to the village?
You mean Greta?
Yeah, sorry, I'm sorry, Meg.
No, I have not received any comments from Greta.
She was going to, I just wondered.
I didn't receive anything either.
Okay.
Um.
Would, would you like me just to give an update of where we are? Just a reminder for the board?
Yes.
So, so where we are in the process is the applicant has submitted a preliminary draft FEIS. At this time, you have received comments from AKRF as well as Keller Sessions on the completeness of the FEIS. And now we are soliciting comments from the board members because you, as lead agency, need to agree with all of the conclusions and the, the way that issues are resolved within the FEIS. Because it is essentially your, your document. So if there's any language within the document or any ways that the issues are framed that you disagree with, now is the time to discuss that so we can reframe it.
Now, AK, as I recall, AKRF, what do you call it, prepared a memo on the FEIS for us?
Yes.
Now, do we, we have to, we can accept it or we can incorporate it as our comments, right? Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so board members, why don't we start with, just to have a place to start with the comments that AKRF submitted to us on the, on the FEIS, which I'm trying to find, I had forgotten to pull them up before the meeting.
Sure, I have a procedural question, if that's okay.
Sure, go ahead, please.
I don't know if we want to do it, I, I just want to get, I want to discuss the procedure. We can either do it with councils, if that's the way to do it, or we can just do it here, whatever your pleasure. I don't know.
If, if, if it's something that we can discuss, just procedure, that probably has to be discussed in the meeting. If there's a legal question, then we should go into.
These are legal, there are legal questions in terms of on the FEIS, on a supplemental one and on the findings and where we're, just so we understand the framework. Because there's a little bit of questions I have with that, they're legal, they're, they're not really, uh, they're not effectuating a procedure, they're more trying to understand it.
So where we, where we are in the process right now is, is the board hasn't accepted the FEIS as complete. So if there was some material that you feel was not sufficiently addressed, that can be incorporated into the FEIS. We don't, you wouldn't need to do a supplemental EIS. You could just ask that that be incorporated into the FEIS.
Okay, I was, I checked the red on that, okay, fine. I, I thought if a new issue was come up, I mean, I had one, but we can deal with that as we go through it or whatever you want. And then I wanted to understand that then the Charlie, the, as I understand it, this is our document, the FEIS, correct?
Yes, at the end of the day, this will be your document.
So we can either utilize this to make a final one, or we can just go along with what is, we can actually prepare, have our own prepared, if I understand, correct?
Yes, you could, within the bounds of, right, the environmental record, so.
Right.
If you have questions or you need more information from the applicant, now's the time to ask. And then, once you gather that information from the applicant, you can use that information to come to a basis on your conclusions within the FEIS and then subsequently the secret finding statement.
Right, now, as I understand it, that we also need a motion if we're going to take more than 60 days on this?
So, the FEIS, according to the regulations, should be finalized 45 days after the public hearing, which of course were passed, right? The lead agency, who is this board, does have the ability to extend that period. But we should be cognizant of the fact that we, you know, shouldn't waste any time and we should, you know, since we have gone past that 45 days, we should, you know, give the applicant a date by which we can expect to have the FEIS finalized. However, if you want more information, it's going to, may take the applicant more time to get that information. I think they likely have to still respond to Ashley's review memo, so we still need that information. So, once we get all the information, we can kind of estimate how much time it will take to finalize the FEIS, notify the applicant of how much time we'll need, and then we would work towards finalizing the FEIS.
Okay, no motion is necessary, because I was hoping that they're, the regs, you don't need to make a motion on this?
Wait, a motion, you're talking about a motion to extend?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just asking you.
Yeah, no, no, I just wanted to know what, understand.
Right, I'm sorry, that's what I had referred to, yes.
Yeah, certainly can. It doesn't hurt, it protects the record.
I think if that's what, David, I think if that's what you want to do, we need to do it. If they think you need extra time or something, we definitely need to do that.
Well, yeah, I don't have, I don't know how long it will take, because it, it is dependent in part upon what we elect to do in terms of the preparation of one, or what, as well as what they provide. So maybe we should move, what do you think, Cecil, if we move to 45 or 60 days and we'll revisit it then?
Yeah, I think, you know, you can make that motion, or you can make a motion to extend the time period for, you know, completing the FEIS until the additional information requested from the applicant is provided. And then from there, you can see how much time you would need to digest that information and finalize the FEIS. So instead of, you know, putting a date on it, you would just put it until the time where the applicant provides their additional information as requested by the board.
But then we would need time from that, correct?
Yeah, and once you get that additional information, you know, you could invite the applicant back to discuss that additional information. And then, once you have it, then you start preparing the FEIS.
There's a lot of flexibility in, in the secret language for this, because it, it, I, I don't think you need to set a hard deadline. Because it says, "The last date for preparation and filing of the final EIS may be extended under the following circumstances. A, if it is determined, determined that additional time is necessary to prepare the statement adequately. Or B, if problems with the proposed action requiring material consideration or modification have been identified." So in this case, if you're finding that it is not adequately addressing one of your concerns that you've raised previously, you can extend it until that issue is adequately addressed.
Okay. Well, I don't want to pin this down, that's all. I mean, I, I have no problem, if we don't need a motion, that's fine. If so, I mean, because I think we have a long, certainly not a long way, we have ways to go.
Why, David, can I make a suggestion? Why don't we discuss it today? Then, when we've decided we're done discussing it today, let's kind of summarize what we need and make a motion so that we have something on the record. And doesn't have to be a date certain, we can do extend until they've provided this information and we'll review and make a decision as to how long we need or something like that. I don't know that we have to, based on what was said literally and actually, I don't believe we need to put a specific timing, but I guess, so let's discuss it now, so we have, you know, so we, we're at a certain point in the review. Brian, have you had a chance to look at it? I don't know whether you would.
I've looked at all of it.
Oh, perfect, okay, so then.
I, I've looked at, I've looked at all of it, I agree with your comments and I understand what David is saying as well. I do believe that, given the fact that we had comments by the board members who are here and answers by the applicant, I really think that it would be beneficial if we had perhaps some feedback from the board members to see whether or not those answers were adequate. If not, then of course, you know, we can ask for more information. I do not want to duplicate anybody's efforts to date. I certainly have questions of my own, which I think are, are really in addition or in tandem to the questions that have been asked already, so I would think just by, you know, just by logical order, if people were able to respond to what has already been, you know, asked and answered, we can, we can go from there, but yes, I definitely have content and I'll, I'll provide it whenever you want.
Okay, so let's do this, take one at a time. So let's start with Ashley's, excuse me, AKRF's memo. Does anyone have any disagreement with anything in AKRF's memo? And if not, do we want to buy, adopt it as the determination of a partial? Or adopt, we don't have to adopt it until we're done, obviously. But at some point, we should either say we, because AKRF's memo is a memo to us, it's not a, right, Ashley?
Yes, it's a memo to the ZBA pointing out issues that we found with the FEIS and, and what we recommend to be changed.
Right, so presumably, I'm assuming, I mean, I thought it was a very well done and I would accept them all, I'm not saying that's all we're doing, but I would accept all of AKRF's comments and require that the FEIS incorporate, incorporate all of the corrections, changes submitted by AKRF. Does anyone disagree with that? Is that, as far as that goes? I only going, I know that's only going a limited way, but let's try and do this orderly. Does anyone disagree with that?
Aren't there some that are responses by the applicant that are in here? I guess my question is, are there not some issues in here that have their comments and then a response?
Right, so we, we commented on the way that the applicant responded to some comments and suggested how they should be revised to be more in the voice of the zoning board. But if you disagree with how we've characterized your voice, then we should change.
Right, so I'm not sure what you're asking, David.
No, no, I got the answer, the answer is that this represents their response. And your comments on their response, am I right? Yeah, I understand, I'm sorry, that wasn't.
Right, I, um.
Yeah. I just, my only concern is.
I'm sorry.
We went into an issue by addressing, by, by adopting this, I just don't want to limit us, but that's.
No, no, David, what I'm saying is, if we accept, what I'm saying is that would be incorporated in whatever else we do. We did this, the same thing on the DEIS, when we commented on the draft EIS, we did the same thing. We essentially took Ashley, AKRF's written memo and incorporated that into our vastly additional, we had extensive additional comments and the AKRF memo was a portion of our comments. So that's essentially what I'm saying here, that the AKRF memo would be a portion of whatever else we're going to say.
Okay, I understand you, I had just approached it differently, I just made my own notes on the whole thing, but.
Well, that's fine too.
That's fine.
I'm not, of course, we can go through it, everybody go, okay, Meg, you look like you were starting to say something, but we're having trouble getting it with your.
Chair, if I could just ask a question, maybe.
Sorry, can I, can I ask a question? I have a question. Hang on, Dave, let Meg, because she seems to be having trouble, so let's give her a moment. Go ahead, Meg.
Okay, wave at me if, if you can't, if I froze, because it's a little choppy for me. I would like to know the goal of the end of the, our discussion this evening. I understand that we are going to review the new information, what we heard from the applicant last time. We might have more questions, things that we found. And then, is what would be the next step? Are we at this point trying to wrap up what our FEIS is? Or is this still kind of free flowing and we're going to share with the questions and then we're going to wait for the applicant to respond? And if that's the case, why are we voting on whether to adopt or not? I don't have a problem, I think the AKRF memo is great and very, very helpful. It just seems, why? Yeah.
We're losing you, periodically you're going in and out, so we're not catching a full full, we're not catching you fully, it sounds like what you're wondering is what we're going to be doing at the end of the day? Well, we haven't come to the conclusion of what we're doing, but the essence that I've gotten so far is that we have a lot of comments and that we want some additional time to consider the FEIS, or we, or we may want to instead submit additional, have additional questions for the applicant to, and need additional information from the applicant. And if so, that's what the conclusion of the meeting.
So, yes, oh, so what I'm saying is, when are we to make that? Like, I would think that coming out of tonight, we could see, we should see if we're going to ask for more information.
Correct.
It just seems, I don't know why we're stopping this memo now, impacted by some of the other questions we get and some other information. I think the memo was really helpful, I, I, I don't know that I wouldn't adopt. I don't know why we're stopping to adopt it now.
Okay, you're still coming in and out, but I'm not saying we stop at the memo. What I'm saying is, if we accept the memo, that's fine, that's not a certain set of comments. What we are doing is if we have additional comments for the, on the FEIS, we are adding to it. Otherwise, we have to go through point by point everything in the AKRF.
I just don't know there.
Got, yeah.
Maybe.
I just don't know why we have to adopt it right now, we have.
We're not adopting it, we're not, we're not adopting it now.
Yes, I thought that's what you just said, Robin.
Yeah, I thought that's what you said.
I, I didn't say we were voting on anything tonight, I don't know that we're voting on the memo.
I think what Robin was saying, what Robin was saying was she just wants to incorporate it into the FEIS, so it will be on the record as part of the FEIS. It's not the end all be all, it's just going to be things that will be incorporated in the FEIS, is the record. We're not adopting anything.
Correct.
I just don't understand the, okay, this is very.
Nobody disagrees with the AKRF memo, because anybody disagrees with, if anybody of the board members disagrees with anything in the AKRF memo, then we have to go through it point by point to flesh out what we're doing, and I didn't want to do that. So I was hoping that we could all agree that, yes, we're fine with those comments. Then, when we do, if we do provide additional comments to the applicant or ask for additional info, the AKRF memo would be part of that, that's all. That's what I'm trying to do. Because if you disagree with anything in it, then we can't do that and we have to go through it.
Well, just, just to voice up on that for a moment, there are things in there, I mean, there's nothing in there to disagree with, but it may not be.
Correct.
We may have supplemental, it may go further or several.
That's what we did, that's what we did the last time, when we did it on the DEIS, we took the menu and added many, many, many other comments. So, okay, so let's do it piece by piece. David, do you want to start with your comments on the FEIS or additional information?
Sure, sure. I had the one question I'll go back to for a minute, because I just took a look at the reg. The reason I had mentioned the supplemental EIS, because I'm, was it 617? And Charlie had mentioned earlier about the record. The record doesn't have something in it here, and this is for newly discovered information or a change in circumstances. And it says, "During the review process of the EIS, we can ask for supplemental on that aspect." My, my point on that is that what I have raised at the last meeting was that subsequent, as I believe to the preparation of this, there was a flood, a hurricane came through the area and there was flooding at the premises. And from what I visually was able to see and what they've acknowledged, there was a lot of damage there. To me, that raises two questions. Number one, the need to address the nature of the damage so that it could be mitigated and dealt with. Because this was unusual and it was, it's got to be dealt with, how can you want to avoid that? I mean, not everybody had a flood. And that's been one of the concerns. The other issue it raises is that there hasn't that much new construction there. The most recent new construction, I'm aware of any significance, would have been the first phase of this, which was the first building. And they, they say, and even in this one, at some point, well, we comply with everything. We comply with FEMA, we comply with the regs and the code. But the issue isn't that, whatever they did when they built this one a few years ago, didn't seem to work. Certainly didn't avoid the problem. I mean, many people suffered by it, I understand, but this was new construction. And they've, the issue is, I would like them to address, and as I said the last meeting, I would like them to address the particular problems that they encountered during this last storm. Why, what the extent of it, the nature of it, and why, given the fact that they had just put up a building there? That was basically going to be, this is part of the expansion of, or part of it. I don't want to get into an issue of whether it's segmentation, I think that's apparent, but I think that the flooding there becomes, they, they, they mentioned flood insurance here, for example, they say that, 19, they say the, and then, I guess Roman 3D1, they claim that the design is compliant with FEMA and the Marineric development requirements. And that they're going to resolve it through existing drainage site planning, the site, what they say, got to do with grading, I guess. The point is this, I don't, I have a big problem with this, because we've seen, I've seen the damage that took place there on a newly constructed. So, first of all, I don't think we're limited to having them, the fact that they're compliant or not is, is of interest, but it's not determinative, you have to sometimes go way beyond that to mitigate. The other is, we've got this entire problem that's been sustained on a part of this project. And the first part of this project, which was the 40,000 plus, whatever is the first building. So I'd like to understand the nature of that, why it occurred? Because all we're going to do now is add, all they want to do now is add another building. And I assume it's going to be that, so I'd like that addressed. If, Charlie, if you don't think, the reason I suggested supplemental was from reading the regs and the, the handbook on it, it looks to me like this is, and then you reminded me of it when you said we have to go and look to, it has to be in the record. Well, the record doesn't have anything about this, it couldn't have because of the temporal nature of it. So, if I read the supplemental, it says to address "The lead agency may require a supplemental EIS limited to a specific significant adverse impacts not addressed or inadequately addressed that arise from," and then goes the "change in the proposed project, newly discovered information, or change in circumstances." So that, that's my only question, I don't care how they deal with it, but it, in my opinion, it has to be dealt with.
Charlie, I think that's a good question, please say whether we could get a supplemental EIS or whether this can be added, incorporated into the current FEIS.
I would say it should be added or incorporated into the FEIS, and because if you look at the secret handbook on page 138, where it talks about newly discovered information requiring an SEIS, it has to be a genuinely new information, so that it would not have been known at the time of the application. So the flooding event occurred in September, but certainly flooding in this area is not a new fact that has been discovered. I imagine there was flooding during Hurricane Irene and maybe after that, and flooding was addressed in some nature in the documents. So the extent the board would like that expanded upon, certainly that can be done. You know, an example of newly discovered information would be after the public hearing and so forth, the municipality was informed that it was a Native American burial ground. And there was no way of knowing that before. That would be something that might require an SCIS. But flooding in this area certainly is not a new discovery. It has happened in the past and it was addressed in the DEIS. To the extent it wasn't addressed to the satisfaction of the board, that can be expanded upon in the FEIS.
Well, I'm not aware, just so we're clear, I'm not aware, I know there's a flooding area, I'm not aware, this is of new construction that's been in place recently, this is several years old, only three years old, that's sustained that kind of damage. And particularly where that's part of the project, but if, if this can be required to be dealt with in this, the reason I say this, we did not know about that, at the time of the FEIS, we were unaware of the nature of the damage sustained by a pertinent part of the project.
Dave, if I can, I think that that helps us justify keeping the FEIS open until we have all of our questions and queries satisfied. And that helps us extend the time that we need to review the project. So I don't necessarily think that we need a separate one. You're right, it wasn't knowledge that we had then, which justifies us finding out more information about what damage was done and how the new construction would fare under, you know, similar circumstances. So I think it's a very good thing to include in the FEIS.
I guess then that just requires new information, correct? Charlie, that's not a problem then, right? Okay, fine, as long as that's not a problem.
Right, because we do need new information here, we need all the details on what actually happened to the building in the flood, how much water there was and what happened, so that we can measure the Dave's, we can deter, look at Dave's point, which is, this was new construction that was supposed to have been built post, post creation of the flood zone regulations and the FEMA regulations. Nevertheless, if it was damaged this extensively, what will that mean for the construction of the extension, enlargement, whatever it's called?
And I think it's a very, it's a very reasonable ask by this board for that information. And again, I really do believe that it justifies extending the time that we have to review the FEIS, because the whole point of this meeting is to determine whether or not the FEIS is complete enough for us to, you know, do any kind of an adoption to it.
Yeah.
So I would just add that I think that the comments on the flood that you're raising right now are with the flooding comments that have been raised in the past on the DEIS and are partially addressed in the FEIS. And so asking for them to be included at, as part of the FEIS and asking specifically about where the flood levels were during IDA. Because there were questions on the DEIS about how high the base flood elevation would be and how the building was going to be designed to withstand floods. All these questions that you're asking now are consistent with those. I think it, it would be valuable for the applicant to provide more information in that.
I believe that two, two months ago, I had asked the applicant for that at a public meeting.
Yes, you did.
Yeah, did you hear from the applicant on that at all?
So they have responded in, in the draft FEIS, but the draft FEIS was submitted, I think before.
Yeah.
IDA.
No, no, but after that, that I raised it with them, I raised it, it would have been.
We haven't received a revised FEIS yet. At this point, applicant has received our comments, AKRF's comments and Keller Sessions comments, and they've been awaiting the comments from the zoning board. So after tonight, the applicant will be able to take all the comments that you raised this evening and the comments of the consultants and go back and revise the document, prepare a red line and resubmit it to the board for review.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay, Dave, anything else, since you're going.
Sure. Now, if you want more, I'll give you more. Yeah, and by the way, on that, no, no, and on that one, I'm interested not just in the nature and extent of the damage that may have taken place and on the height of the water, I'm interested in why it occurred, why it was not able by their own following and their compliance, why it was not avoided. And lastly, how would they propose, how is this different? In terms of, how can they now propose this so that it would not take place? Question I had on this is on the zoning compliances. They use the word existing a lot. And that's a confusing word here, because does existing mean pre the first part of this project or after it? And when you compare it, I, I, in terms of variances, that becomes question. They talk about the variances they need. I'd like them to identify what variances are on the property already, so that we can really address that clearly. Because I think total variances and departures, I think also they need to address the parking. They have said that they may consider, I have some notes on this, they may consider, I said, oh, excuse me, they say it parking at three, Roman numeral three, A14, they note, "It is likely that spaces will be assigned to the various users." I, I suggest that this is the time. And we have, they have to divide, they've mentioned the different uses on the property, one is the school usage, one is the, for the workshop, for their operations, the others, they need to assign it, because that has always become a problem after the fact. A year down the road, someone else takes the space and what have you. As far as the hazardous materials, I thought that was inadequate. I thought it was inadequate discussion of the levels, it's been raised, I've asked that before. Mitigation is limited, they talk about a barrier. They say demolition may result in asbestos lead or PCBs, which may require abatement and or proper disposal. That's at 1-8. And my point on that is, well then, look at it now, that's what this is about. Look at it now, so that you don't, during the commencement of this, say, oh, look at this problem, it's, it's, it's theirs land now, it should be able to be told, I would think. Why can't it be addressed now, what tests are necessary? With regard to flooding, let's see, I, they talk about flood insurance, they, they, they say the, I think this is very crucial, and it's 19. They claim that the design is compliant with FEMA and Marineric development requirements. And my understanding is, that's interesting. They claim that the design is compliant with FEMA and Mamaroneck development requirements, and my understanding is, that's interesting and it's certainly required. So it has to comply. We're talking about what else has to be done, and that's one of my concerns is, what else? The fact that you're compliant, if that's all it was, you turn in a notification, certification, we are compliant, thank you, but that doesn't let you go. Uh it's not a controlling thing. Um. There's no structural foundation plan, they indicate, that's a three, Roman numeral three, D four. Seems awful important, it's not something later on, that's that's an issue. Um we don't have the engineer, the village engineer's response that's referred to with Roman numeral three D five. As far as the visual impacts go, um. There's no real comparison, I looked at the photographs, I mean, the the errors, it's nice, except they don't show anything in the vicinity. I think that visual is an enormous concern. Uh it's raised by people all the time, and I think there needs to be this. They haven't responded or discussed, there was a, one of the questions you raised was in there, um. They say they're they're removing all demolition of all buildings are being demolished, I I assume that that's just the type of what they mean is. Except for the existing storage facility. Um. My concern on segmentation has come up, I think there's no question that this is segmentation, I think a- at parts. Of their report, their draft, they were very direct and openly acknowledged that by saying, it was the, they got a POS deck. It was too expensive, so they cut the project in half. Two years later, and they they do the ver, years can, but two thousand twelve, they made the application then for a new one, they dropped it in the size. It gets built in two thousand fifteen and sixteen, and then two thousand eighteen, they come in for the other. Um. They then say it is an addition, I think it's clearly segmentation, which is why it's all being considered. Um they said, there there's no question in their own language, they talk about it being operative cohesively with the existing storage. Um. Let's see, there's a question there about precedent, they say precedent is not an environmental factor to be considered. Um, we took something that came up, I I think that's that's somewhat. There's there's some merit to that, but it's also some some parts of it that are disingenuous, in the sense that. Obviously, the growth inducing aspect of this. On in the vicinity in the area, particularly with our having to comply with and follow our own precedents. Um, oh, we are going to then be, is this what we are setting as a standard, and what will affect that will have on the neighborhood. Um. I'm just looking here, will find this one. Oh, I asked a question, and it was referred to in here, I had asked whether they had a re- respond and and go to on the um. The VOCs that they found, whether they had to report that. I'd asked them that at a meeting, you've referred to that, but they haven't answered it, they they're not sure. Well. If they're the applicant, they need to be made sure, and it was my question, there are some types of things when you find, some petroleum products and some other things you are obligated to report. There's an error in. Roman numeral three K two, says the first application was withdrawn in March two thousand nine, it was not, it was POS decked in two thousand ten. Um, let's see, a couple more notes. I'm my, I should point out, I'm very concerned on the whole hazardous materials, that's been a very tough area for it. There are engineers assigned from DEC, and I believe possibly EPA, but. It's, I don't know how they did the testing, I I thought we were gonna have an engineer's report saying this is where it should be, this is what is. On parking, they claim, they have fifty two now, they want twenty six proposed, which is seventy two. Um, I just don't know how they got there. I don't know what the what the requirement is in terms of. For parking, for what they now going to have, where they're going to have schooling, I guess they're doing a project with the high school, they said, and with the offices. And are they counting variances they've already received, that we're just using the same thing twice? Um. Um, going back really quickly, I'm just seeing my notes here on on one eight hazardous materials. They say demolition may result in asbestos lead or PCBs, which may require abatement or proper disposal, that should be addressed. Um, mitigation should be addressed. Um. Flooding is not addressed adequately, other than to say compliance, and we're gonna grade. Visual impact, I touched on, I don't think they've dealt with that. Um. Yeah, I mean, segmentation is clear, um, I'm not gonna quibble with them, they can say what they like. Um.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, David, this is our FEIS, so.
Yeah.
You're saying, I don't want to quibble with them, but it's our concern if we believe this was segmentation as. Some of us, those of us who may have been around the first time, do, I um.
They're pretty straightforward about it, they just don't conclude, Rob, and I, sure, you're absolutely correct. They just don't reach the conclusion, but they say, oh, well, we came in, we got the POS deck, we said, no, that's too expensive, so now we'll do this, and then it's finished and. You know, forty eight months later, here's our new plans, and guess what it happens to be, approximately the same size. Um, yeah.
I could just inter- interject to provide some clarity on the segmentation issue.
Please.
Um, so segmentation is cured by this process. In that the DEIS should evaluate the entire development, right, including previously, previously constructed. So to the extent that has happened in the board's eyes, then segmentation, you know, ha- had been cured. Let's say if they reduce the project to avoid a POS deck, you know, years back like they did. And then they came in with, uh you know, a type two expansion of it that may or may not have environmental impacts. That would have been segmentation, because a proper, complete environmental review wouldn't have been conducted. But the DEIS process should be designed in a manner that it cures the segmentation issue. So.
That's an excellent point, I think, but I think that just.
No, we have to consider it as a total.
Right.
That's the cure, and and that's that's just the basic thing, regardless of what the applicant says or what we say, it is one project site.
But we don't have all the information.
That's the flooding problem, I get.
We don't have all the information that we would need as a whole, in other words, the impact of the hundred percent. I mean, they're still doing a hundred percent, so I suppose it is, from that perspective, it is the same thing. Um, so.
That's what we're, that's that's really, I believe, it's just my opinion, and I'm I'm responding specifically myself. Because I wasn't on the first time around, uh i- is that. We just have to look at this project as if the original building was not built. Uh in order to ensure that we don't uh go along improperly. If we believe this is segmentation, I personally believe uh that it's one project. Uh it's one owner, it's one property, to me, it's one project, so we should, in my opinion, just be looking at this. From scratch as if the original building doesn't exist.
I I concur with it completely, I just think that underscores the need for the flooding problem, because that part has had a huge problem. The original problem, yes, no, I agree with you.
Right, and given that, I think the flooding is even more so, because what they've done is they've added. A lot of building, although not necessarily too much impervious surface, but they have added a lot of building.
Those are my notes.
Okay, Brian, or let me go with Meg, Meg, do you wanna?
Yeah, can can you hear me? I'm using my telephone, is that good?
That works.
Yes, it's working well.
Very good, and thank you, Ashley, for helping me set this up. Um, yeah, I want to. Um piggyback on um what Dave said about the parking, they don't have a parking table now that. Um shows the new uses, they seem to be using the same twenty six number, and when I started looking at the parking. It made me start to think about what the uses are, I know that they listed as a woodworking shop, which I believe would be fabrication or something, but. Actually, when I read about it, it seemed like um they are going to have classes or have kids working there. And I'm not sure that that's a permitted use, that does seem to be some kind of school or something, I'm not sure how to consider that, so. I couldn't see where that would be a permitted use in this area. Um, also, I don't have much information about the incubator. Um I suppose that fits under the use of a professional office or building of, of professional offices. But um I don't know how many stations are in there, are they broken up into different workstations? Or offices within the incubator, um to get a sense of how much parking is is required for that one. Um, I also, some, help me out here if I am not reading the report correctly. But I'm a little confused, on page one dash three, early on. Um, they're talking about how they reduced the FAR with a new design, so the FAR reduced from two point four three to two point one one. Is what I see on page one dash three. And other places, though, they talk about the FAR being one point. Three, four now, and one point nine one being proposed, I don't know if they're talking about total FARs, or they're talking about the percentage of the FAR. So I got confused and of what's being put in the tables or how it's being described.
Yeah, I thi- I think um i- i- in the AKR memo, that memo, that point about the inconsistency.
Yeah, there seems to be an error somewhere in there.
Is is discussed, so I think.
So it's a lot different to think about a total FAR two point one one, it is just different than thinking about point one point nine one. Um, I also see that they discussed. That they will be compliant with FEMA and what the village requires, and they talked about getting their floodplain permits from the planning board. I don't think that that is the board that approves floodplain development permits. That's actually the floodplain mitigation officer of the village, that is a separate application that should be applied for. In their table, when they were listing all the other permits that they need, table one dash five. Um, they didn't mention that they need to apply for a floodplain permit. Um, I also would like to see, did they ever get an approved floodplain development permit for the existing building? Um, so as we're looking at what happened there or not, what what were they required to do um originally when they built that building? Um, small point on page thirty one, but I guess it's gonna be our FA, FEIS, so. They refer to us as a town rather than a village, um that's a a small, I guess we're not gonna do that. Um.
But we have to point it out so that we know, not that they know it can't be in there.
They know that we're a village, other places they refer to us as a village, but that seemed to be a a town. Um. I think I'm getting pretty close to comments that I wanted to make there, just checking. Nope, that's that's pretty much what I had to say.
Meg, you said page thirty one?
No, I don't think I said page thirty one, I I said.
Okay, sorry.
I was referring to tables, I, page one dash three is one, one thing I said, one dash three.
I got you. No, uh one four.
Table one dash three on page.
Ah, yeah, page one six, yeah.
Oh, thank you very much.
The numbering leaves a lot to be.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. Also, I have one last question. Um. They have suggested what uses they're going to use this for, that they they showed us in the floor plan, that the certain part of the office, certain part of the. The storage units, the additional storage units, it's gonna have the incubator. Um. I'm not sure when we go to giving them variances, are we doing it for a retail business or a business office? Um, what will make them have to keep those uses in that space? They're building a huge space, if, let's say they sold the building, and it's to another permitted use. Would, it seems as a building as of right, would that change? Um, would that be allowed? It could be something that needed a lot more parking, so I'm not sure of how we.
Contingency?
I don't think that's different than an existing, if we, if when the building, when the village gives a permit and a building is built. And it's built because they're going to have a certain kind of office, or a certain restaurant, or a certain something. As of right or not, and then they change the use, they can't get a permit for if there's any construction, now the problem is. You don't need a permit simply to change use, and that's where the problem comes up, because if they're doing construction. They would need a permit from the village, but if they don't need any permits. Built construction type permits, then they don't need to go back to the village, so the question is, what what about the use? And I think we can, in the variance point, since we're granting the variances. For a project, and the EIS is for this project as shown. I think we have to make it clear that it's for this project as shown, and that changes to the use, and maybe. Changes to the use will require, or may require, because we don't know, additional consideration and review. Whether from an environmental impact or from a variance with respect to the entire project, so I think.
Well, I I would like to know if that's possible, because also I think that that just weighs in on when we start to calculate how many parking spaces. That's usually why you go to, it's an office building, the minimum requirements in the village, they say, but we're only gonna have two people in there, so we reducing the parking. But you have to ima- remember that you are approving an office building that could possibly be populated by a certain amount. I think Ashley had something to say, so.
I I just wanted to add that within the existing code for the village in Marineric in three forty two dash seventy five B. Any change of use or intensity in use, other than relation to a one or two family dwelling, that will affect the characteristics of this site. Or increase the requirements under this code, in terms of parking, loading, circulated. Circulation, drainage, utilities, landscaping, or outdoor lighting, does require site plan approval from the planning board. So that is a trigger that's already in the village code.
But if they're, thank you very much, if they're considering this to be an office building, and they said, well, we only have two people working there, so. But now they're gonna change it to an office building, and there's gonna be twenty people working in it, in a open concept office or something like that. Is the building department really gonna decide that that's, are they really gonna count the number of people? It's an office building, they didn't change the use. They didn't seem to, usually when we hear about it, if they change the use to something that's clearly now it's. A gym with teams, with teams in it, or something like, that 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 it, the intensity definitely changed. Um, I just wanted to flag that I don't think we can stick to the numbers, like only two people in this office and only four people in that office. That we should be thinking about how many people could fit into an office as we go forward.
Uh we've had that problem before, Meg, you may remember there was an office also in the in this district. Somebody was building for themselves, and we had the same issue, um so it is a not uncommon issue, but I think. Which is maybe the way we should be approaching these is. Because it's an, something like a restaurant is a given, you know, just thinking of other uses, but an office building, whether it has. Just, an office building was more fully occupied pre-pandemic, if you look at most office buildings, they were more fully occupied pre-prand- pre. Pandemic than now, just a normal, any office building, and I don't, I think what we should be doing is looking, what's the. Maximum or min, in other words, so if the village code requires. And I don't, I don't have the code open in front of me, so I don't know, we we, the parking we should look at, and you're right. In a way, and that's what we came up with on that other one, we need to look at the parking in a way, so the fact that they say they're gonna have two employees. Is not the ju- gauge of what we're doing.
So we we need to see the parking table with minimum code requirements for these different uses, and they have to figure out what their woodworking classes. What kind of use that is.
Robin or or Meg, if you could just take, look at page one dash seven, I'm not following something, I just, they've got here. Off-street parking.
That's incorrect.
At least I can't look.
Okay.
That's uh, Dave, that's incorrect, they have one twenty one uh marked, it should be one thirty seven is required.
They have one thirty seven of what I'm looking at.
On page. Table one dash.
Seven, no, it's on, it's above one dash four, it's above it. Oh, you see above that, it says off-street parking, one thirty seven.
Right, and then in the next table, they say.
I know.
Parking one twenty one.
Right, but then they say they have existing on the above table of fifty two.
Yes.
And then they say they want to go to twenty six?
Yes.
Are they going down? That was what they told us, they were going way down on parking, because they said they didn't need it, they never used it.
Right, they it currently exists with the other buildings, because now they're looking at the entire plot.
Well, they're saying there's fifty two now, with the, with the.
Right, and they were, they said, when, when they were here, they said that, uh who knows which meeting, but they essentially said that. Because of the use that they're gonna have in the future, and again, that was the original, the the storage before. All these new uses, as Meg pointed out, um and therefore.
Yeah.
They were only giving parking as needed for the storage. They were only giving parking as needed for the storage. And therefore they said, well, we don't need as many parking spaces because storage doesn't use that in our experience. And this is where our records go. So the new uses we have to, which didn't, we didn't really. They have to consider the parking and the the traffic from those other uses. And interestingly, um, I think, and I'm sorry, no, but the traffic study that they did was based on their original plan for this site. To the extent they've changed the plans for this site in terms of uses. Have they changed the parkings, the traffic study? And if they haven't changed the traffic study, then I would say, do they need to update slash revise the traffic study in order to reflect some of these other uses that they're now proposing?
They did provide some updated trip generation in the F E I S.
Oh, okay. To reflect all the new uses they're they're um proposing?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. Where?
Uh, on page one dash ten, there's a summary. And the the levels that they're estimating for the revised use are low enough that it it doesn't trigger like a a full traffic analysis. They're estimating.
How how is that, that it doesn't? I'm just curious.
Because don't you look at the full, because they didn't need one before? Again, are you adding to it or they're saying the totality of it?
They're saying a total of nine morning peak hour vehicle trips and eleven P M. Peak hour trips.
From all of the uses?
From all the uses.
Oh, we that says we, so it says, we say it will result in the generation of nine A M. Peak hour vehicle.
Yeah.
We definitely need to know how many stations there are in that incubator or how that is set up.
What they're proposing.
Do we have a traffic study, a parking, a traffic study on this?
We did. Originally, they did a traffic study. Yes.
But not on this particular, on this project here?
Yeah.
Okay, not the original one, not the first part.
No, they they did provide a traffic study on the first on the in the D E I S and they updated the trip generation for the F E I S based on the new building program.
Is it consistent with what they're writing here at one dash ten?
Yeah, so this is what they're providing is what's on one dash ten. They didn't redo the traffic study because the change in the number of trips was so low.
Yeah. This 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 has us making findings that, given the very low volume of trips. I'm not sure how we can do that and what we have to justify that with. Just wanna explain that.
So what we can ask for is for them to elaborate on this more fully and provide a table that shows the comparison of the trip generation between the D E I S and the F E I S. That it's more clear what's being compared.
Seems good.
Has the village engineer indicated when a report would be issued to us or not?
A a report on 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 what specifically?
I thought that they said that the village engineer, we don't have a village engineer's response to flooding yet. Three D five. Um. Hold on. Three D five. All right, hold on. They could just use numbers, Arabic normals from beginning to end, but this is um, comment. D nine. I think is one of the places. Says flood storage documents have been revised in accordance with the consultants and arrangement have been provided to the consulting engineer for review.
I'll follow up with with the village engineer on that question. I know they looked at the F E I S.
And maybe you can have.
But I'm not sure if they look, if they answered that specific question, so.
Maybe you can have the engineer look at the flooding.
Do we have the ability to request comments from other boards during this F E I S?
Um, so that the comments from the other boards should have been received during the D E I S process and not every board submitted comments during that process. Uh, at this point, it's really the lead agency's document to revise. Once you've accepted it as complete, there then is a ten day waiting period before the finding statement can be adopted. And during that ten day waiting period would be another opportunity for the other boards to send comments.
Right, but we don't, but we, but actually after the find, and once the we we are ready to adopt the F E I S, you only have ten days, right?
It's a minimum of ten days.
Oh, then you can go longer than the ten days?
Ten to thirty.
Okay, so if we did get comments at that point, we could do something about them.
Right.
Cause I know, I know that. We have in the F E I S, we have to respond to every comment that anyone sends, that anyone makes. So if we get any written, we haven't gotten any spoken comments. But if we got to get any written comments, we do have to incorporate them in the F E I S. So if during that ten day period, what do we do? Let's assume whether it's a planning board or a public submits a comment. What happens to that comment and what does the board do with that comment?
Typically, you would try to address that comment in your statement of findings. It depends on the 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 nature of the comment. Um, if it's bringing up a new issue, then it's something that you can try to resolve within the statement of findings.
So we wouldn't be meet presumably, we would have to meet, the board would have to meet to discuss what we wanted to do with that.
Yes, so once you've accepted the F E I S as complete. Um, we would have a draft finding statement prepared. Charlie and I were talking earlier, it would probably be me preparing it, then Charlie revising it. Um, and then the board would discuss it at a meeting. And we would make further revisions based on the board's comments before it would be adopted.
Yeah, if I could just point out, though, you said that the other, it's our document, which it is. But six seventeen point nine of the regs B says, um, under environmental impact statement, the lead agency and other involved agencies must cooperate with project sponsors who are preparing E I Ss by making available to them information contained in their files relevant to the E I S. So I think there is a level of cooperation.
Yes, there is. And and this board has been sharing the document with the other agencies. The document is available on the village's website as is the draft. Um, so it it has been a coordinated review thus far.
Yeah, have we shared this with the flood mitigation committee?
Um. I don't know if it was sent specifically to that committee. It is available on the village's website and we can forward it to them specifically.
Because we're really stuck on understanding the requirements of the village and what how the original building was built in terms of flood mitigation. Um, and then the adequacy of what they're planning now. And it seems that it's super relevant to get comments from the flood mitigation committee because that's what they're focused on.
Okay. Um, anything else, Meg? Just moving along.
No, thanks very much. No.
Okay, Brian, you wanna go through your comments?
Sure, um, you know, one of the major variances that they're asking for, uh, which ties into the F E I S is, you know, the the pure square footage of this structure. And, you know, in order to build it, uh, there are environmental concerns that I have, which I definitely have questions on. Their final scoping outline from twenty nineteen, uh, you know, acknowledges that there's, you know, very high water table. It's only within three feet of grade. Uh, and that there's contaminated soil in there. Um, at least some amount of contamination. Uh, we only have a certain amount of testing, but contaminated soil is also something which they discuss. And in that document, they talk about uh, having to move a thousand tons. Uh, that's two million pounds of dirt. Um, you know, that gives me, uh, you know, when you start going into the F E I S, the first thing that, you know, I think of there is, you know, what are not just the long term effects? But, you know, I'm interested in the short term effects on the environment. Any kind of substantial adverse change, uh, you know, in in not only, uh, you know, how the soil could affect the water, but how are they gonna be handling it? Is it gonna be uh, taken off site directly? Is it going to uh, be moved around in heaps? Because once you disturb it, if it's dry, it starts going in the air. Uh, and then, you know, you could have contaminants in the air. So how how are they going to be handling the soil that they're going to be disturbing uh, during the process of construction? Now, I know that we don't have a construction plan yet. Uh, you know, which makes sense because they don't know what kind of building uh, they're going to be allowed to build. But there has to be some level of ensure of of assurances to us that there are gonna be fail safes put in place to ensure um, that the handling precautions are not gonna affect the air quality, the water quality. Uh, you know, and also the structural integrity of anything and everything which is around there, which includes the road for railroad way. Uh, if they're gonna be digging down and they're gonna be right on a property line, uh, how is that gonna affect the integrity of the road uh, for that whole industrial area behind them? Uh, that's a significant concern of mine. Now, I have seen, you know, so that it doesn't come back to me uh, that things have changed in the D E I S. They've changed the numbers to five hundred fifty cubic yards. That comes out to one point two million pounds of dirt. Now I'm seeing on table one dash two of the, uh, and maybe that's just a comparison chart. Or, you know, I think that's just a comparison chart of of the net excavation that they've decreased the net X, you know, net excavation. Right now, what they're saying is, in my mind, substantial poses a health and safety risk, both short term and long term in the environment and in the structural integrity of the areas around it. And I would very much want to see uh, that addressed. Um. See. You know, we've we've done a lot of talking or you have done a lot of talking about, uh, you know, the character of of the area and and the visuals. One thing that I haven't seen, which I'd be very interested in, which I know that they can do. I'd like to see a a visual rendering of what this site is going to look like as proposed from the train tracks and from ninety five. Both during the day and at night. Because I think uh, that uh, you have a tremendous amount of people going past. And if you're going to talk about the character of our community, um, this could be visually, um, monolith, uh, even as proposed. Because if you look at it uh, from the current renderings from railroad way, it's just one big, it creates a canyon, I think, is as somebody who, uh, you know, had said from uh, from before. And I'd like to know how it looks from the train because um, that does reflect on our village. Um. Let me see, uh, substantial change in use, integrity of use. I I do have concerns about the mass of the building, uh, you know, because I think it goes to the intensity of the use. You're you're increasing the F A R, uh, you know, almost double from what the base requirement is, you know, and that really goes to the segmentation, which we've already discussed. I think in order to avoid the segmentation issue, we've got to, uh, we've got to just look at this from scratch in in terms of what they're looking for for variances. So I think the mass is um, is definitely something that we're gonna have to weigh against the benefits. I'd like to see maybe more of what the benefits would be to outweigh or give us some kind of justification why we should be doubling F A R uh, for this building. Um. See, is anything else? Um. I think just along with the with the environmental, uh, is there any way to do remediation of the soil? Uh, you know, pre existing soil remediation of it uh, as such. Um, and I think lastly, which I think Dave really covered it, um, I'm I'm very concerned about uh, flooding. Um, and I know that, uh, you know, the building may meet FEMA standards. Um, but I definitely would like to see a grading plan uh, for the site with elevations. Because to my knowledge, uh, the property slopes down uh, and the elevation where the current existing Murphy Brothers uh, contracting offices on the on the corner of Fenimore uh, is lower than where the existing building is. So I I would like to see, you know, what the overall elevation of the property is and how they're gonna grade it. Uh, so as to substantially prevent damage on their property. But even more importantly, I I really wanna ensure that we're not sending, we're not diverting just because of a change in grade water uh, right into the middle of Fenimore or right down into railroad way where all of a sudden that becomes a canal. Um, so I'd like to see uh, an elevation plan. I I don't, maybe they have one, but I haven't seen it. Uh, an elevation plan for this site uh, and everything around it. Um, you know, to determine uh, you know, what the effects of of water runoff would be uh, and and flooding would be. Um, and I know that that's probably also gonna be looked at by Harbor Coastal Zone or or the Flood Committee. Uh, but again, um, had we asked them for advice, I think that's the first thing they would have said it for us to get and take a look at. Uh, so I just think that we should get that directly. Um, and I think I think that's uh, that's about it. There's there's a lot to consider here, a lot to consider.
I think those are great comments, Brian. And as you said, I I I just wanna say clarify. I think that they said that they would comply with FEMA requirements, not that they have they have made sure that this is FEMA compliant. Is it possible for us to ask that they get an approved uh, floodplain development permit before we approve this? So we know that it is compliant with our flood mitigation officer and the plans in the village. Does that have to come after this? It's an environmental requirement and it might ask, they might be asked to change what the project is. But it's great that they've made the commitment. They realize they need to do it. But I don't believe that they have had that review yet.
So that may, that may go part and parcel with the actual building plans that they haven't developed yet. Because, you know, they haven't gotten that far. So it it, you know, that's something that maybe Ashley or or Charlie would be able to uh, explain to us.
When I've done my research about FEMA and about the floodplain development permits, it seems like something that you apply for, you're right, when you apply for like a building permit or something. But it doesn't have to wait on a site plan or something else. So um, I think that if if you apply for the permit and it may not be complete yet, that you're getting some response from our flood mitigation officer. Right now, we're we, you know, we're not getting any information from the people that actually have to uphold the requirements for FEMA.
I don't, I don't think until they submit a detailed plan that shows exactly how the building is designed and everything else that they can actually get the determination. That they can actually get the, um, determination. I think that it's no, it's, you know. So I, I think that they have to comply and we can ask for all the information that we might. That we think that would be necessary to make that, but if they haven't finally designed their building, which they, I don't know that they have. Now, interestingly, when they come for variance, they're going to have to have the building designed. So, because we have to look at the building as a whole in order to determine, so, um.
I just think that.
We may be at a place in between, we may be at a place.
But, but again.
I'm sorry, something got finished. Let me finish. I would, I don't want to wait for that later. And I also want to know, did they get that permit for the existing building or did they just build that without getting a permit for it?
That's the fair question.
That's a reasonable question. And the question, the question is, were they required to get one? And if so, did they do it? And if they weren't required, what were they required to do? Cause rules.
And if they were not required, then I would go with Brian's perspective that this is now a one project. And so it needs to, the entire project and everything that's built on it must comply with the flood, floodplain permit.
Right. And, and also just to make myself clear, what I'm asking for is a current elevation map. So we can actually see.
And a future elevation.
Exactly. Grading, the grading plan which shows, so, so we can actually see what's there. Where and how the water is going to be directed based upon, uh, the lay of the land. And then how that's going to be altered, uh, and then we'll, we'll be able to see, uh, how that will affect. Uh, somebody else on, I just thinking about it now and, and perhaps Rob and you had asked about it. Uh, were they putting, were, were they expecting to put any lighting on the back of the building? To help railroad way from being, um, you know, very dark at night?
They had some lighting, they showed some lighting because it came up previously. I don't remember exactly what the answer was or what they said they were doing.
I, I know that they, I know they're having obviously very nice, you know, whatever in front, but I'm, I'm just as concerned and back. Uh, and that's also another reason why I asked about the, the, the visuals from the train station at night and during the day.
I, I think that's an actual good question. If it's not too late for us to ask for that information. Um, and I probably, um, if we can get that information, I think, Brian, that's a very good point that you raise about visuals from other directions rather than. Um, just the simple one that they give the, the, you know, the, the location. We did have asked for more than they originally provided. Additional, but maybe we can't complete the review until we get that additional.
Can we get the site plan and can we get, is there a topo that they have?
I don't remember. I've been always trying to figure out and look at the, the D E I S to see if they had something, but it would probably be in there.
There wasn't survey included in the D E I S.
Yeah, but was it a top? Was it just a survey?
Um, I think there was.
One of the things we might want, just to supplement that for a moment is we may want to get the, I've asked for this before, the site plan approval. On the property that's there.
Wait, they don't, you mean from the existing building?
Right. Yeah, I, I've asked that in the past because I've always said, did you comply with that? Cause on my recollection was there were some variances in it, but, okay.
We did give them.
This is our, the, since this is our F E I S, when we talked about like, does the town have, does the county have to be, does it, the state have to be notified? Is there any reason instead of going back and asking, we just don't contact? The D E C and say, here's what we have, does this have to go to you? I mean, I, it's, you've got super fun site, you've got a lot of sites right there being remedied as well, but I don't know. It seems like we're just creating a lot of, if it's going to be our document, so what is worth?
I did not have a chance to go through because I, since it's our document, there's some wording that I did want to.
Yeah.
It, we read as it's their document, not as our document, just the way it's written, so you have to edit that. And, and I have to say something that's been bothering me since the very first submission is the title page. Now this is called Mamaronek self-storage building added on, which I think is what they're doing. But I do think that it should really be spelled correctly since I think they meant to have said, and now that it's our. F E I S, it should be building addition, or we can change it, but not, or we could leave it building, add it on. They want to do it, but that is what it says.
What do you see that? I'm sorry.
The cover page, look at the title of it on the cover page, of the E I S of the.
Oh, I think it should just say of this, of Mamaronek, the, the self-storage as opposed to where the site will by address. Because particularly in light of what Brian mentioned earlier, I, I agree with this is, we're doing the whole project here, not just the add-on.
So, um, so I think we need to let, I mean, this is our F I S, so how do we want to title it and can we change that? Uh, Ashley, I ask you, you're probably the best one to answer that.
Yes, if there's something that's, doesn't seem correct with the title, you can.
Well, no, no, it clearly has, the, clearly the title we could, can be corrected if we want to say addition, we can do that. I think Dave is raising it and I sort of raised and Dave is following up with an additional point, which is. To the extent that we're considering this really, some of the impact is really the impact of the whole project. Can we just consider, consider Mamaronek self-storage building, period?
Um. For the title or for the, I, I think you.
For the title. Because that's what we're doing, I mean.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and it may be that we have to consider it, call it self-storage building addition, because that is sort of what the current, if you will. The variances that they're applying for, and, and this is in relation to the variances they're applying for, and the variances really only relate to. The expand, the enlargement notwithstanding that the F E I S may have to consider more sort of a.
Yeah, I mean, I think the action that's triggering this is the addition. So I think keeping the title, the addition makes sense, but certainly the D E I S needs to look at the site as a whole.
Okay, so we'll title it and it needs to be corrected to be addition. I don't think added on. While it may be correct, um.
Point out that the F E S that I'm looking at says addition.
It got it correct. I thought, didn't realize it did. I thought I saw that.
Yeah, but if, if we're going to maintain that it's the segmentation as I think it is, and I think the record's very clear on that, as is this. Then I think we should title it properly. Otherwise you have a variance. We're saying it's for the addition. So then, I mean, I think. We've all pointed out.
No, I'm looking at the F E I S and the title page says Mamaronek self-storage building added on.
Oh, I see. I have self-storage building addition. I think it's a Mamaronek self-storage building.
And it, and the word after is missing, the I is in T I O N. It just says.
It's had a diton. It's, it's a ton. How many tons? How many tons in an addition, right? No, I understand, but I think it shouldn't be.
So it's got to be fixed, but no, Charlie was saying his says addition, but it's not in what I have.
Well, you could also, for, for that matter, you could title it modifications to Mamaronek self-storage.
That sounds smaller. I would rather leave it built, I would rather leave it titled building addition and then within the project, we can describe it as. Um, and maybe we have to redo the description of the project as a whole to explain what it is. In order to just sort of the description in the very beginning, what is happening so that it's clear that they're, that something is being added. And as a result, there are impacts that have to be considered by reviewing the whole thing and.
Right, well, that's, that's what I was getting at. That's why I say, you know, and I don't disagree with you. That's why I was saying modifications to the existing building, uh, because I wouldn't want somebody to just pull out and look at the addition. On its own, as it's, as its own thing, it should relate back to the original build.
Yeah, I don't think modifications does that make, does any better.
Do we have to have a section in here that deals with segmentation, Charlie? Why we're considering the whole thing so someone understands it? I mean.
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting, that we needed to write an introduction that explained why we're doing the whole thing. I think we, we need to, we, we need to write it. Or I, I guess since it's they're prepared, I think this is something that we need to write rather than, um. The applicant needing to write because we want to set it the way we want. So Ashley, if this is something that you could draft up. Um, based on what we've said about how we want to consider it and why to be sort of the introduction.
Yep.
That would be good.
And Ashley, if you take a look, they, they have comments throughout the document that they've drafted. That talked about it's cohesively working, it's a prior approval, it's consistent, it's part of the same thing. It's pretty clear. Couple of their dates are off, mostly okay.
If nothing, okay, so we've, everybody's given their comments, I think. Um, so now we, wh- what the next step is, we have these comments, we have the comments A K R F provided, all of which we are. Considering as our comments, um, and based on that, we would like. So we would, there are some of these things that require responses from the applicant and additional information. So I think we need to, uh, we can't approve it, we can't even. Complete our review because we don't have all the information we need. So I guess the next step is for us to request the applicant to provide the information that we've, we requested today. And then, once we have that additional information, we can conduct another or, uh, uh, complete our review. Presumably of the F E I S.
Yes, so the next step is for the applicant to go back, revise the F E I S, including the additional information that you've requested. Um, I would advise the applicant that the revised document should be prepared as a red line. So that you can see where the changes were made specifically. Uh, and then once the board is satisfied with those changes, you can move to accepting it as complete.
Okay, so I guess we just.
Before we move to accept it, we need to, we have not even seen the beginning.
No, I know, I, I mean.
I'm sorry.
Was telling us the process.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
She was just telling us the process that they have to come back, once they come back, if we like it, then we can accept it. If we don't like it, we can't, don't accept it then. And one of the things that has to come back is the language that I've asked Ashley to draft.
Right. Now Charlie, do each of the agencies do their own finding statement? We have to do the first one, right?
Uh, yes, you have to do your first finding statement, then each agency, uh, will conduct their own finding statement prior to them issuing their approval.
Okay, do they have to comport with ours? Ours also have to be followed, don't they?
Um, they can deviate from your finding statement, but their findings have to be based on the environmental record.
Gotcha. So the finding statement is done, what, within ten days or something? I forgot, few weeks after?
So after the F E I S is deemed complete and filed, it's circulated to all the involved agencies. Then there's a ten day waiting period like Ashley had mentioned, and then you were able to adopt your finding statement after ten days. The other agencies may adopt their finding statements, I suppose, before you do. Um, however, typically what happens is the lead agency adopts their finding statements. And then the other agencies kind of just say, uh, we agree and we adopt the lead agency's finding statement, but that might not be the case here.
Maybe, might not be. Will the, are there any guidance on the, should we give him thought to that now in terms of the finding statement?
Uh, we can, because we don't have all the information we need.
I would say there would be plenty of time in between the adoption and the filing of the F E I S. And then Ash's office and my office preparing a draft finding statement.
But as, as Robin mentioned, there's a lot of crafting still has to take place, even once we get the information.
Okay, so anybody has any final things to say on this before we move on to the next? Uh, to the closed applications. Okay, so we've completed our comments for today, um, and now it's up to the applicant to respond. Okay, um, next items are the closed applications. So the first one on the agenda is eight oh five Mamaronek Avenue. Case nine S P twenty nineteen. Is that the, I look at the, yeah, duck donuts. Um, we have a.
I did not have, I did not have time to review this resolution. It came in later and I haven't looked at it. Um, I felt.
Let me just see what I, whether I had put any comments. I have comments on several of them, but I don't remember if I have any on this.
So there wasn't, there was a bit of a mis, my son, uh, there was a bit of a miscommunication between myself and Brittany and that's on me. I had thought that the board wanted to discuss this matter at the work session, but we had, the board had not yet deliberated on this, so there was.
Oh, so then we didn't, there was, so there should not be a draft resolution.
There's no draft resolution yet.
Okay, so then we don't have a draft resolution, let's just discuss.
Um, Greg is not here, this, we could wait, we could, I would hold this over until December. We don't need to do all of these applications today.
We don't need to do a lot, we can, correct, we never need to do all of them. Um, if, if, if you want to wait for this one, we can wait, that's fine.
Because I have not viewed this application, I haven't thought of it.
Okay, what's been on the agenda? Okay, um, the next item is one fifty-seven Mamaronek Avenue. Um, Murph and Eddie's.
Right.
And I'm going to take the rest of the, you know, go ahead, okay, Murph and Eddie's comments, I have lots of comments on the, um, but wait, I believe, let me. So we did get several, several resolutions, uh, that were distributed to us that had from past. Um. Applicants who had hours. We have Nona Corolla that is open till eleven, the latest it's open is eleven. Then we have, uh, one of the, another restaurant open till eleven. Then we have another one open till Red Club open till eleven, Iku never later than eleven thirty. Um, Frank Infanucci had was one A M, Nasho Nash was eleven P M. So lots of different times. So I think we can, if we have reasons to add, we can put whatever times we think reasonable here. Um, and there is no prior, it is not like there is a pattern to how we have been adopting. Um, the hours and they've gone all over the place is the, the main conclusion. We do not have a pattern. And, uh, whatever hours we think appropriate for here is, are the hours or for any other application are the hours we should adopt. For that applicant.
I am conscious enough of the fact that we just voted on a resolution for a restaurant that has music. It's on the, the, the Mamaronek Avenue, it was just a month ago, asking for two A M on Saturday and we had certain, we changed it to one. And we had certain conditions about when to close and, uh, when the customers had to be out. And I think for consistency sake, um, I don't see, unless we could find a substantial difference between the operation of this. Uh, new application and the, the other one, that we should be consistent in our finding. They both had asked for two A M. We came up with a, a certain standard for certain hours and, and standards around that hour. Um, and we should be applying the same ones here.
Okay, there is a significant difference between this application and the next. When this point is on the application, on the corner. Of the building that is the regatta, which has a, a huge, a very, very large number of residents. In terms of distance from residential use, there are significant, this is significantly closer to a residential building. Than the prior application. Therefore, and, and since we were very clear that Nona Corolla, which is right across the street. We were very clear that hours had to be limited for Nona Corolla. I think it is appropriate and we can limit the hours for this restaurant. While being consistent or really we're not being inconsistent because there is a rational reason. So I do not see any problem with, if we are concerned with limiting the hours as we see fit. And to me, the, the consistency with the last application is not the basis for granting the hours.
To me it does, I, we did talk about residents, there's plenty of residents that live on top of the building down where the other application was and across the street. I don't think it's just the number, all of those people count just as much as all the people in the regatta. We talked about the fact that they are next to residences. Just as this one. I don't think that those residents are any less, um, requiring of quiet hours than this one. So to say, oh no, but there are a lot of people here and somehow we're going to have a different standard, so. I think, I'm sorry, I think the applicant is, would be satisfied with even less, so if, if board members really feel strongly. But I feel very strongly that for the weekend hour, that it should be consistent with what we just approved for another.
What did they have, what did they have in the past on the last special program, Barless?
I think it was one o'clock. But that's just my memory.
Yeah. What date did you send those resolutions? Do you know what days we got them?
I can blow it up, hang on.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, so here, I have several comments on, on the resolution before we even get, it's just substantive. I mean, it's just language before we even get to the hours. Um, and I'm not saying I know what the hours are. And it's interesting that I was talking about numbers, not who the residents are. I don't think there's any difference. It's not a question of who the residents are. It's a question of how many numbers are next to. it's a question of how many numbers are next to the residences. And there are, in numbers, more residents in this area than there are further towards the other end of Mamaroneck Avenue. Uh, I, I based my resolution on what I think is appropriate, not on what we did somewhere else. Um, so let's discuss this specific one, so I'll give you my comments on the resolution, then we should discuss the hours, which is a separate issue.
Very quickly, Dave, it was November 12.
November 12?
Yep, there's two separate emails, because I forgot to actually attach this resolution.
Okay, um, so just reading the resolution, going through it in the first paragraph, whereas Murph and Eddie's has applied to this board for a special permit to operate, you don't have a new existing restaurant. It's either a new restaurant, or it's an existing restaurant. So it's a new restaurant on lowercase property located at 157 Mamaroneck Avenue. So it should be, the word existing should be crossed off, and it should be a lowercase p. Then, two paragraphs down, um, this next paragraph should really continue into the next one. I'm gonna read it as it should be. Whereas the premises is located in the village's C2 zoning district, which permits restaurants by special use permit pursuant to zoning code section 34245. And in the same paragraph, the premises was previously occupied by a different restaurant, Barley's. Sort of incorporates some of the words from the, the third paragraph into that one, and shortens it all up.
Okay.
Um, and then, moving down to, um, uh, B, to the further resolve, the following conditions. We have B and C. B says the special use permit shall expire, and C says the special use permit shall terminate. Charlie, you were, you put those words in, did you mean to distinguish between expire and terminate? Otherwise, we should use one word?
I think the logic behind it, because I saw this on prior resolutions, was that it expires upon any transfer.
Yeah, that doesn't expire, it terminates, it should be terminated.
That's fine, terminate.
It should be terminated, and we've talked about this before, and my recollection from case law in New York is that change of ownership is not relevant to, I've mentioned this before, change of ownership is not a basis, mere change of ownership, where there's no change in the operations or use, is not a basis for a new special permit. So Charlie, is that correct, or is that not correct?
I believe that is correct, so we should use terminate.
So we should take out that the special use permit renewal grant, and it's renewal, or it shouldn't be renewal, that the special use permit renewed here, or something herein, shall terminate upon any change in the use or operations of the premises.
Okay.
And then the next one doesn't need, then you just merge, because B and C then more or less read the same use operational configuration of the premises. I think you should take out C, and make B say that the special use permit renewal granted herein shall terminate upon any change in use, operation, or configuration of the premises. Period, and we don't need C.
Sounds good.
Okay, now, uh, anybody else have any comments? Otherwise, let's discuss the hours.
I have comments, I, sorry, I have comments.
Okay, go.
If we go back, if we go back to the fourth paragraph on the first page, whereas, I don't know that they said they weren't going to, to cook any food, um, that they will not cook food, that they're only gonna cook small plates, but it, I don't know what is the definition of cook, but I think they're going to heat them up. So I would change that, that paragraph to the application does not propose any changes to the existing structure, and will prepare a limited menu of food items for service by waitstaff at tables provided. So, because we did not get details about, are you heating them up, warming them up?
Yeah, they did. They specifically said they weren't going to cook anything that was asked and answered. They weren't going to cook anything, all they were going to do was heat things. They specifically said that.
I'm sorry, I, that's not my recollection. I remember they said they don't have a full kitchen, and they were gonna have different items. And by this way, you're, you're actually eliminating, I don't know what would be considered cooking, if you had, you know, tacos and you melt cheese on it, is that cooking? And now they can't do it because they can only, they can't do that? I don't, the idea was that it's not a full dinner, it's limited, uh, food items or bar menu. Um, but I don't think that we should say that they cannot cook whatsoever.
I, I don't have a problem with changing, they did say it, but I don't have a problem with, um, saying something as you, something to the effect. Could you read again what you're proposing, Meg?
The application does not propose any changes to the existing structure, and will prepare a limited menu of food items for service by waitstaff at tables provided within the premises.
Okay, I got it, that works.
And then, um, if we are now going to not say that change in ownership, because we had that in some other special permits, but we're not asking. We're not taking it out, I would like to make it a, a little bit fuller, and, and that it's any change in use, can we say, um, um, including but not limited to intensity and type of services? Because, um, a change in use could sound like it's going from a restaurant to, uh, to becoming a, you know, fitness center. It's not just whether it's changing, if it's changing, if the restaurant itself has a greater intensity, has more customers, is going to offer different services, I believe that it should come back for a special permit. So if we could just flesh out change in use, including but not limited to intensity and services offered.
Well, we've already said change in use, operations, or configuration. Operations would include all of what you're concerned about, so I don't think we need to say anything more than that.
I don't know that, I don't know that it's so specific. I would appreciate, if you think it's the same, I would appreciate a few more words to say.
That's fine.
Because I've seen a lot of restaurants change hands and not come back for special permits, and it is a completely different intensity of use, and it is a completely different, it's a bar scene, it's late hours, it's a lot more drinking. So I think if the, the services, it's also the services provided.
Fine, so let's say, shall, shall terminate upon change in the use, operation, services, or intensity of use, or configuration of the, of the premises.
Whatever.
That's fine. Anything else, Meg?
No.
Anybody else have any?
Hours to be, but, go ahead.
We'll get, talk about hours separately, anybody else have any other comments on the language before we get to the hours? Okay, hours. Uh, Meg, you wanna, Meg, what, what are the hours you would like?
What I, what I would suggest, what I suggest, looking at the list here, um, I, Tuesday through Wednesday, 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Thursday, 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM, doors and windows to be closed by 11:00 PM. Friday, 4:00 PM to 1:00 AM, doors and windows to close by 11:00 PM. Service to, service to cease by 12:30 PM. And for Saturday, the same thing, doors and windows to close by 11, I'm sorry, Saturday would be 4:00 PM to 1:00 AM, not the 2:00. Doors and windows to close by 11:00 PM, service to, uh, cease by 12:30 PM, and customers must be out of the premises by 1:00 AM.
And I have a... I, I have a, I, I don't mind the, I actually have a problem with the 1:00 AM, it's much later, I would make this, but since it's a three-year special permit, since this is only granting it for a short term, um, we can do that, but I would not have Thursday be later than 10:00 PM. That's what we've done for most, almost every place else on Mamaroneck Avenue. We've left the weekdays, which is Tuesday through Thursday, only till 10:00 PM. And I would not, if we want to be consistent, this needs to be, then, then that is going to be consistent.
Yes, I agree, that sounds reasonable.
But, but I don't think 11:30 is the, is, I think 11:30 is too late, I, I'm sorry, 12:30 is too late for wind, for service. The service would have to cease by midnight. If you want to get customers out by 1, if, if everybody has to be out of the premises by 1, people, services have to stop by midnight.
I'm copying the language, the exact conditions that we just placed last month for the other restaurant that closed at 1: And we decided that service had to cease at 12:30, and it was up to the operator to make sure the customers left by 1.
Well, I'm changing that.
I'm sorry, to give the same closing hour, to say that you have to start, see service a half an hour earlier than the one we just approved last month, does not seem consistent.
This is not like a formal sit-down restaurant, so that it's not a matter of people have to start their meal by a certain time, half an hour is, I, I would think 12, you know, half an hour is fine. They don't have a full service wait, uh, right. That's different, because that takes people, you know, they sit down, then at midnight, you're not gonna throw them out.
Yeah.
But whatever.
Um, Brian, are you, are you, are you commenting on this one? I don't remember.
Yeah, no, this one, uh, yeah, this one I went through from...
It was the last hearing, you're right, I'm sorry, I forgot.
From scratch, I, I hear what Meg is saying, um, uh, about certain aspects of consistency. I can tell you just, you know, from my own thoughts, I literally went around on the internet when we didn't have the old resolutions, and, uh, looked at everybody's opening and closing hours. Uh, and, you know, saw that across the street, you know, that they closed at, you know, uh, Nona's. And, uh, you know, I saw Frankie and Fannucci's was open till 1:00, I didn't see anybody open past 1:00. Uh, so, you know, my thoughts were to not have, uh, not extend the hours to 2:00 AM on Saturday under any circumstances. We heard from, uh, I, I think the community affairs officer, or, or somebody in a similar capacity for, uh, from, uh, from the apartment building. Uh, you know, from, uh, from the big building, yeah, from the regatta. Yeah, and she didn't seem to voice any concerns with the last, uh, with the last establishment. And, and as a matter of fact, in terms of, of windows and doors, uh, I believe, uh, you know, the, the, the owner says that there's really no windows to be open, and that the door will remain closed. Uh, my problem with the applicant was I couldn't understand why he kept saying, why everything was acoustic, but yet they're gonna have an open mic. So, you...
Is Mike the name of the singer, or is Mike what he's called?
New kind of acoustic, a new kind of acoustic.
Yeah, so, so, I, I do think, you know, I, I do think that, um, we do have to think the fact that, you know, if they're gonna have amplification, uh, you know, how in, how in fact, uh, that could, uh, that could affect things, uh, because...
The next paragraph, the next paragraph, it goes to all amplified sound music. Um, we could say shall cease at 10:00 PM, we could make it, if it's amplified, we can make it an earlier hour than it has to cease.
Right.
And also, all windows, it should be, and all windows and doors must be shut during times of amplified sound music. Right now, it doesn't have doors.
Right, so, so I'll, you know, so I, I think he actually said something about them. He anticipated the music ceasing around 11:00, but yet he wanted to keep, uh, the facility open later, uh, because of its nature as a, as a wine lounge, or something like that. So really, just in my opinion, I don't have a problem with their hours as they stand, with the exception of, uh, I would not give the 2:00 AM on Saturday, I would limit that to 1:00 AM. But I also do think, uh, that the music should cease earlier. Uh, I don't know what other people's opinions on that, on time. I know that, uh, Robin, you had said, um, you thought that perhaps the whole establishment ought to, ought to close earlier. I don't know whether or not the music, uh, would, you know, ceasing at a, at a different time would, would change that opinion. Um, I'd like to know what other people think.
We've done that before, we often, we always make the music stop early. We always often do, so that's perfectly reasonable too, so we can easily make the, make, make the hours for the music stop earlier.
So perhaps paragraph F, we say all acoustic and amplified sound music, well, we can't say all acoustic, all acoustic music and any amplified sound or music shall cease at 10:00 PM? And all windows must be shut, would that be, do you think 10:00 PM is a good time? I think less than that.
I think we've done 10:00 PM everywhere else, so, um...
And I think that's what, I think that's what he said, the applicant said it would, would be stopping around 10:00.
I think we've done that everywhere else, so I think 10:00 PM would be fine.
Well, the, I, I certainly wouldn't have a, a, an objection to that. And again, uh, you know, if the, if the, if the sound stops emanating from there, I, I don't have a problem with them operating till, till 1:00 AM. Uh, they don't have any big-ticket items coming into that place. It's not like, uh, they're selling big full-service meals. And in terms of, uh, what they do provide, uh, it, it may be kind of even an after-hours place. Maybe somebody is gonna go, uh, uh, there to enjoy after dinner. Um, they're certainly not going there for dinner, so I, uh, I, I, I would have it, I would be fine with 1:00 AM on Saturday. It's, it's, it's the music that would be more of a concern for me, and I think that that's addressed if it stops at 10:00.
You would stop all music at 10 o'clock inside? Is that the, is that the concern?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's what, uh, the rest of the board members said is consistent with the other music on the avenue.
So what did it used to be there, where it's been, because...
I can't remember what Barley's had.
I've been there, I've been there at night, not that frequent, maybe four, five times.
Well, I don't think that we said music has to be, because restaurants often have kind of very quiet, you know, you have the, uh, the background music, whatever, you know, like the, um, you have the, like radio playing in the background, nobody, obviously, no one uses radios anymore, but, uh, the equivalent of the radio playing in the background, and we've never had a problem with that. So I think it's any amplified sound has to end at 10:00. Other music that isn't amplified does not have to end its end, because if it's not amplified, if you have a speaker, it's not...
As long as doors and windows are closed.
Right.
I, I think amplification might be any electronic sound, uh...
We never meant that, we've never, we've always distinguished between, um, but you're right, if you have a radio going on, the radio has a speaker, is that amplification, technically, it might be.
Maybe you should just differentiate between live...
No, it's not only live, because lots of places don't have live, I mean, the problems next door that had happened, whether it's a record, it depends on how loud your, depends on how loud your speaker is. Um, so it isn't the live, the, the amplification, I mean, it isn't the music versus anything else. I think we can say except for background music.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
And, you know, we don't have to be, I mean, that's the idea, we're letting them have background music, but if the intent is to have a sound that people are listening to, that's always louder, so.
What did they want, you know?
What?
What did they ask for? Did they ask at all for anything?
They, they talked about music, but, um, they wanted the sound. You know what I think, let's, I, I, okay, so let's, I mean, if the rest of the board is willing to go to 1:00 AM, I, I would not be, but, um, but I'm okay with it, um, provided that, so why don't we say that weekdays, Monday to Thursday is till 10:00 PM, Saturday and Sunday is till 1:00 AM, and they have to the la, end of the services at 12:30. Sunday is, I don't remember, what do they say, Sunday?
Four, I think, four.
No, e, end, end, just...
10:00 PM.
10:00 PM, so Sunday, so it's Sunday through Thursday, 10:00 PM. Friday and Saturday, 1:00 AM, and the last ser, and service has to stop at 12:30. And that they have to get all customers out by, they have to leave all customers out by 1:00, and that, um, any amplified, amplified sound has to stop at 10:00, and background music can continue until, um...
Close, with all doors and windows closed at 10:00 PM.
And with all doors and windows closed, right. Work, everyone, everyone okay with that?
My, my only question is if it tends a little early.
We have most restaurants closing at, they had 10:00 every night except Thursday.
Really? Yeah, no, because it, it's a place that basically brings in a crowd, not a dinner crowd, but a later crowd for drinks, and they usually, it's, it's a nice crowd, they're like, oh, whatever you know.
They've, they've, they've asked for...
The only night that they asked for 10:00, other than the 2:00, 1:00 AM, was Thursday. That was, that they asked for later, they asked for midnight on Thursday.
And we've been very clear that school nights were, or had to be earlier, that was the issue.
I understand.
I don't see why, I know that, I don't know that we want to change it. And as has happened before, if they operate till 10:00 and they find it a problem, they can come back and amend the special permit resolution. I mean, I think that's what they would do. I think that we'd be open to that, if they, if they're operating for a year and find that it's not a problem, and nobody has any objection, because they're not making too much noise, and it works, then I don't see that we'd have a problem with extending it.
Gotcha.
So, I think that's...
Okay, so we make a motion?
Somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion too. Okay.
No, go, go ahead and I'll.
Uh, Dave, did you, I'm sorry. Dave, were you, were you here for this review? Did you watch?
I wa- I listened, that was when I was traveling. It was, yes, I did, I listened to part of it. Oh, it was a lot of fun. I tried to join the meeting without success.
So if, if the.
My dog and I were just having a great time with it.
If the motion is to adopt this resolution with the changes that we just enumerated, then I would vote yes.
Yeah, I do notice, just, just one thing, on, on Charlie, on the bottom of that resolution. You've got all of these Meg, Robin, Greta, yes, David, no, Brian abstain. I think all that is wrong. You're gonna have to fix it.
Yep, I've noticed that. I'll fix it. Those are.
Okay. I'm sorry, so you made the motion. I just wanted to make sure I remember what you're doing, telling that. Um, and Brian, you seconded it?
I second it.
Okay, David.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Meg.
Yeah.
I vote yes as well. That is adopted. Moving on to the next one, which is. Ten forty-three West Boston Post Road, um, case number four A twenty twenty-one for chopped. Okay, comments on the resolution.
I have a, I have a large comment, I guess. Um, Charlie, if this resolution refers to this application, that the original application was December tenth. And this is an amended application. We actually voted on this, the December ten twenty twenty. And signed a resolution. I thought that was all closed out. And this is a new resol- this is a new application. Not an amended one of the December two thousand twenty-one.
Yes, that's accurate. I'll take that out.
Okay, great. So, and then it, cause it refers to the SU, oh, it says, is that a special, what is SUP?
Special use permit.
A special use permit, okay. Sorry. I don't know that you can define the term, I, I, you have to read the whole thing to under. Okay, okay. Um, is it okay if I go on?
Oh, yeah, sorry, sure, go ahead, go ahead, Meg, you can give your comments first, that's fine.
So, um, I would actually, if you're gonna change it to, this is an application. Um, filed on a certain day for a special use permit, and it was for, to operate a restaurant with car service. I would think you could put in the whole paragraph and the following variances. Isn't that how we normally write it? Like they ask for the special permit and the variances, can you put it in same where as clause?
The only reason it didn't was because they applied for the special use permit in February. And then they applied again in April for the area variances, so it was two separate applications. But I can, you know, put it all.
Whatever you think is clear.
I think that's clear that way, given that it applied separately. They did submit separately, it wasn't one application. So I think it's.
Thank you, okay. Um, and then as we go, so we have whereas pursuant to zoning code, any of the definition of restaurant. And whereas, um. So at the bottom of page one. You repeat whereas, oh, something about food establishments. I don't know why that's in there. I don't know why the, the three lines at the bottom of page one are there. I don't know that it's necessary. It's whereas. Definition of restaurant. And whereas pursuant to definition of restaurant carryout, those are the two things that should be listed. And then I think we cross out, again, you defined restaurant a second time. Or some, if we take that out, it's a second reference to the definition of restaurant. So I think it should just be whereas pursuant to the code, restaurant definition, whereas pursuant to the code. Restaurant comma carryout definition.
Yep.
And then skip down to whereas the applicant estimates. I think it's a, it's a repeat in there.
Yep.
And then I would cha- change, I would change the paragraph whereas the applicant estimates. I would, I don't know, it had stuff about ordering before or after, and that's not germane to our decision. So I would change this paragraph to whereas the applicant estimates operation at the premises to include. Two-thirds of the anticipated customers ordering food for consumption off the premises. And one-third of the anticipated customers ordering food to be consumed on the premises. At a table served by waitstaff. Because those are the two factors that relate to the descriptions in the code. Of these definitions. I don't think whether they do it prior to, um. And that it's supposed to, I don't think you have to say it's the pickup or eating at a different location. You simply say consume off, you know, off the premises.
That makes sense.
Okay, and. See, go fast. Um, so then if we go to page three, whereas the board consider the application on these certain dates. I don't think we considered this application on March fourth. Am I wrong? I thought that, that might have been one of the old hearings for the application.
Well, this was submitted February eleventh, so we did consider it on that more. This one, I was.
I thought I looked it up. If we could just check and make sure that that was.
Yep.
Sometimes they're submitted and they don't get on the, they don't get on our agenda. But, but if you could just check the March fourth date. And then, and then again, check the date on where the board deliberated. I thought we deliberated October, November. Four and November sixteenth, but not on April one.
Right, we didn't deliberate. I, I mean, we talk about it, but that's not usually what we consider the deliberations, correct? That's what, what, yes.
Okay. Okay, and then, uh, the last paragraph in page three, letter A, the premises include. It should be an existing structure, not and existing structure. It's just a title. Um. And I had requested, I don't, how the board feels, on page five, under be it resolved. It's subject to the following conditions. To, uh, I would say, the first one's fine. Um, number two should just be the applicant shall not operate car service. You don't need as a car, as a carryout restaurant. Um, I wanted to add the applicant shall not utilize the drive-through window formerly used by the bank for any customer transaction.
That's fine. I'm okay with that.
Okay. I mean, we're all sort of assuming it was in the site plan, but we didn't decide, we didn't decide that factor, so we should just say that. And those are all the comments I have on that one.
Okay, um, I have some, okay, so going back to page one, minor more language again on some substance. So the fact that the prem- because this make, none of this makes sense unless we understand from the beginning. So I think the paragraph that says. Uh, premises currently improved with an existing structure, that is an existing, that should be, um. Early on, whereas the premises is currently improved, we're talking about what the premises is. So the statement about the fact that the current premises is currently improved, um, needs to be much.
Boom, I have more to say too.
Uh, much earlier, so I think on page one, um, the above caption premises is located in the C one district. And then the next paragraph should be, whereas the premises is currently improved with an existing structure and related off-street parking. And drive-through window for an existing bank. That should go like the third paragraph of the whole resolution. Um. Then, in the paragraph that begins, the applicant estimates, uh, some, some language changes. The applicant estimates that operations at the premises will include, uh, the rest is what Meg read would be, is fine. Um.
Yes.
And then whereas the premises is currently improved comes out in the next page because we don't need it there. Then correcting the dates of deliberations, because there was no deliberation on this application on April first. April first may have been when we deliberated on the prior application. Um, uh, the, okay, so she said she mentioned about the existing structure, then you get to area variance, then it says.
Before we get to area variance, I'm so sorry, but it's before we get to area variance, on page four, where it says the applicant does not change the.
I'm on page four, I'm on page four.
Yeah, but it's above the variances. I thought it, I just, it's the very top on B. Did I cut you off? I, I'm just trying to get to there before we get to the variant, area variant.
Well, you were reading, you just said it where the variances, I'm sorry, where are you? That's page four has the variances.
Yeah, the very top, before the variances, at the very top of the page, on page four, where it says, letter B, the applicant does not change the existing structure.
It's part of the area variances, right, we're in the area variances, yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I realize on the site plan, they are changing the existing structure. Because they show that they're gonna demolish the, the overhang that's there next to the drive-through window. They said they're going to remove the posts that are holding up the roof there. So the, the main footprint of the building is not changing, but it isn't that there are no changes to the structure.
So then we need to say, so wait, then we need to say there, whereas the, um, the building is not being. Where the application does not change the building, because the building is not, um, being changed, you're right. It's not just the footprint, it's not the footprint, it is the entire building. They're not doing anything to the building, except knocking down.
They were adding a small, I thought they were adding a small piece in the back.
Why don't we?
I think it's the fact that the footprint is not changing, um, it.
Why don't we just? I just have a suggestion. Why don't we say, sort of, sort of incorporates everything? The application does not propose significant changes to the existing, existing structure.
It's not, no, because the problem is that, the, the, some of what we're relying on within terms of parking and other things. If they were rebuilding the structure, then they could have, then they could redesign the parking, because they're not rebuilding the structure. Um, that's a, that's relevant to why we're giving the variances. So I think we do need to make it clear that if we want that bed based on what Meg is reminding us, is that. Um, the application, and it's not just the footprint, it's, it's more than the footprint. Because in fact, if they are expanding it, then they're expanding the footprint, so that would be wrong. So I think that, um, is not. We, we have to say something that recognizes that basically the building is staying the same, although. Um, there, the, the, the overhang, there's an overhanging portion that will be demolished where the bank, where the bank drive-through was. Um, and.
And I also think, I, I also think we need to check, I thought they're doing a little add-on in the back that would not change the footprint. But I thought they were covering something, a walkway. I thought I saw a slight modification in the back. That didn't have any impact on any parking spaces. But I wouldn't wanna limit them to say, we're giving the variances. And they can't absolutely do anything to their building when they go for a site plant. I think what's relevant is they're not changing the footprint. So that. You know, that, that affects the, the parking lot.
I, how about, how about, I mean, football, maybe, how about the relation, the, yeah, footprint is fine, foot, I'm okay with that. I'm okay with that, isn't exactly correct, but it's so, but it's not, but I'm okay with it. Um.
Okay.
Oh, oh, someone, okay, so going down, I was, where I was, was, um, in C of one. It says the premises is within a commercial zone neighborhood. That English is atrocious. It should be within a commercially zoned neighborhood. It should all be commercially zoned. It's not commercial zoned. Um, or within a neighborhood zone for commercial uses, but it isn't commercial zoned. Then in number three, it says where the, while the requested area variances are numerically substantial, I don't know what that means. And I don't think they are numerically substantial. In what way numerically substantial? I don't know what that, uh, is, what that means. And I don't necessarily agree, so, um.
I believe it's referring, I believe it's referring to what Greta was, was saying, was the percentages of the variances. So she found them to be substantial.
Right, but that's not, but they, the, not all of them are, and I don't necessarily have always agreed with Greta. As to what she considers, uh, substantial, but that doesn't mean they're numerically substantial. It would have to be while some of the requested area variances may be greater than. And I would put the percentage down because I don't agree that some of them, I don't remember now. But in some other cases, she said it's fifteen percent, and I don't agree that just because something is bigger than fifteen percent makes it substantial. So, um, I don't remember in this case, since I don't have the application open in front of me.
Okay, but perhaps, Dave, you're gonna be voting on it, and I'm gonna be voting on it. Do we feel it's substantial? One way or the other, instead of, I understand, Robin, you don't feel it's substantial, but Dave, do you think it's substantial?
You know, um, that's an interesting thing, when we vote on it, we can, we can deal with it, but let's, we have, nobody's commented elsewise on this too. So, um, I'm looking to see if I can have any of the applications. I don't have that application here in hard copy.
If you go to the, um. The, where I list the area variances, they talk about where proposed a four-foot setback, where five feet is required.
That's large. And then. You say that, what page, um, you're, is that?
In the first page of the resolution where I list the variances that are required.
Um.
Right.
Yeah, a seven point four foot setback where fifty foot feet is required is.
So that means it's a pre-existing non-conforming yard.
Right.
And so I think that that should be a part of, so I was gonna suggest that the reason, I think that it is substantial. To seven, so I would say, but it's, you know, how you say that it's mitigated by the fact that it's only one parking space. To be located in a pre-existing non-conforming minimum front yard.
Well, I don't think five, high feet to four feet is substantial. So, um, I do think that fifty feet to seven feet is substantial, so.
I thought if we make any, I'm sorry, if I thought if we make any changes, is it only if we're building into it? We're creating a parking space into a non-conforming use.
Right.
And so then we have to consider what that, that minimum yard was supposed to be, if we're comparing it to fifty feet. That it is quite substantial.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not disagreeing that seven point four to fifty is substantial. Four to five is not substantial. In my view.
So where are you referring to four to five? I'm sorry.
There, they need a side yard setback and a front yard setback variance. The front yard setback variance is substantial. I do not believe the side yard setback is substantial. All I'm saying is, I don't, since I don't think are numerically substantial. Cause actually, that doesn't mean numerically substantial sounds more like there are a lot of variances, and there aren't. So if we want to say, I would wanna say here, while the requested, while the area variance for a, um. For a front yard is substantial. Is just substantial, is a substantial variance. It's not numerically substantial, it is a substantial variance. Under a totality of the circumstances and given that. You know, we can say something, I just think it's okay under totality of the circumstances, um, they are not substantial. I don't know that we, it's because we say we're proposing the use of an existing structure and related built areas. I don't think we need to, to go with more than that, but I only, I wanna say that whereas, though, because I'm only concerned about the one, which I think is substantial. I don't think the other one is. I, and again, numerically substantial doesn't mean that it's, what, that doesn't mean the same thing. So, um, so I think we should say, whereas the front yard setback is substantial. Very substantial, if you can't really say very substantial, is very large. Um, under, uh, uh, under a totality of the circumstances, the area variance are not substantial for the following reasons. And these are fine, but again, the premises is within a commercial zone neighborhood, a commercially zoned neighborhood.
I'm sorry, why do we have to say, and, I'm sorry, one area variant is substantial, one variant is not. And then we're gonna say the area variances are not substantial for the following reasons? I don't get that.
Oh, then we'll just say. One area variance is, because we have, we're making a finding that we are not considering it overall as. While it is, what we're saying is while it is a huge, while going from fifty feet to seven point four feet. Is a huge difference. That's what we're saying. While the difference between the, the proposed. Front yard setback and the required front yard setback is large, that's really what we should be saying. While the difference between the proposed front yard setback and the required front yard setback is large. Under the totality of circumstances, the area variances are not substantial. That's what we really.
We don't, but they don't have to pass every single balancing test. We don't have, we could, we could say one of the variants is substantial. And one is not, and we could still grant this. We don't have to.
I, I'm fine with, you wanna do it that way, that's okay too. I don't have problems doing it that way either. I, I'm fine, if you want to do it that way, that's okay too, I don't have problems doing it that way either. While one of, while the area, while the variance for the front yard is, is very large, but, um.
But usually we use the term substantial, with the requested area variance, one is substantial, one the board considers not to be substantial. And do we have to always have reasons? We could say because it, it's the percentage of the front yard, and the other one is a smaller percentage. But I don't know why we're, we're having to, to try to find a reason why they pass every single test.
Um, I, that's fine, so then we just have to say, while the front yard variance is substantial, period, that's number three. We can just say the front yard, so one, the area variance will not result, two, the benefit sort cannot be achieved, three, the front yard setback is substantial. You wanted to say that, that was all we have to say, the front yard variance is substantial. Period, but we have to say, however, it is not, however, under the totality of the circumstances, we are not considering it as, um, as being a reason to turn this down, that's what we're saying there. So we would say that.
So Charlie, if we're saying that one of the tests they do not pass, um, what is the appropriate language to say that we don't think that it's unbalanced, a reason to deny the variance?
So, uh, related to this, I would advise that if the board does want to distinguish the two variances, one being substantial, one not, not being substantial, then you should do that. I would advise, however, if you are going to approve the variances, and you do think that under a totality of the circumstances, the area variances capitalized as combined together are not substantial, because that's going to give you just further support in the resolution.
And I would say, I see, that's why I want to say, while the air, while the front yard variance is, is large, under totality of circumstances, that the area variances capitalized are not substantial because it is a pre-existing use, et cetera, et cetera, that's how I would say it, that's what I would propose we say.
I don't know why we're, what, we, it's substantial, usually is the term it is substantial. But it is.
I'm not saying yet.
But it is within a pre-existing non-conforming front yard that has been that way for many years. So the, the impact on the pre-existing non-conforming front yard is, is not great.
Charlie is suggesting that we need to give to, um, make it clear that while it's large, it isn't so, so significant that it's going to outweigh anything else, therefore we say.
I understand, I, I just don't want to say that we, I don't want to tie our hands and say that this is not a substantial variant. So I, I wanted to say it's large and mixed in, it's, it's not substantial, I find that one to be substantial. But we are approving that one, even though, actually, I think, why we're lumping it together? Why are we approving that one even though it is substantial? Why? To me, it's in the pre-existing front yard, it's not really going to change the fact that the front yard is really small already. It's in a commercial zone and it's existed that way for many years. So to put the parking lot, one parking space in there, um, is not a dramatic change, that's how I'm voting for it. I'm not voting for it because I think, well, want to add them up, I'm sort of ignoring the fact that that's substantial. So.
And that's the point of making the statement, while it is large, given that there's a pre-existing use and a pre-existing condition, the one parking space, and given all of these other factors, we are not considering it so substantial as to be significant. Period, that's what we're saying, that's what we're saying, so Charlie, that's kind of put, you know, work that.
Yep, and the other one, I don't find it to be substantial.
We, we only say.
Could we go back, could we go back to number two? Um, the benefit can't be sought, I just thought, the reason why the benefit can't be achieved by some other method is because there's no other room on the lot for a parking space. We're not, it's not because the building's not expanding or something, it's, it's the fact that there's not enough room for parking space.
But it is because the building's not expanding, if, because the building is existing, if the building wasn't there, they could, could have moved, if the building didn't exist, they could make a smaller building. If the building didn't exist, they could possibly reach located on the site. The point is, the building is there, and therefore, um, it, given that the building is there and they're not changing, there's no other place to put it. That's the problem, it's because the building is there. If the building wasn't there, they could do an awful lot of things.
Right, but you didn't refer to the fact that there's no other places to put a parking space. You're sort of assuming everybody would know that, but we didn't write it in there. That we're not changing the footprint, the existing structural footprint, and there is no other space on the lot to create more parking space.
Well, you can add that to what it says then, I'm okay, we can add that.
Yep, got it.
Okay, anybody else have any comments? Oh yes, Brian Gladstein's last name should be spelled correctly.
I will make sure that happens.
I, I will have to say though, on chop, since I wasn't part of the deliberations, I'm going to not weigh in on this one, yeah.
But it does have to have your name, it'll say abstain.
I would, I would hope so, yeah, it's spelled right on my screen, so.
I've got two S's, S S T.
No.
That was the correction I.
Yeah, thank you.
Charlie, could you check your email, could you email me that again? I'm not just, I got, I had the wrong one. Sitting here looking for it, I can't, send it to D. Neufman, okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
You want to look at it now, David, before we vote?
No, I've been following it, I had it before, and I know the application, um. I'm good with it.
Okay, so.
This is where they did not ask for the area variance on the window, yeah, I know. I've progressed to.
Okay, so if you're okay with it, I'll make a motion. Would you want to look, David, first?
No, it's fine, it's, it's not coming in, there's something wrong with my machine here.
All right, well, I make a motion to approve it, to adopt it as we've edited it, is there a second? That's Meg or David?
I check, I second.
Okay, Dave?
Yes.
Meg?
Yes.
I vote yes, and Brian.
For the record, I abstain.
Okay. Next item, and then we, and we can decide when, as much of these as we want, I could, we could do at least one more, I'm okay with. And then we can decide whether to keep going, is my perspective on this. Um, so the next one is five thirty-nine Jefferson Avenue, which is an area variance for the pool case number four eight twenty, oh, we have two case number four eight twenty twenty-one. There is an error there and something needs to be fixed, but it is five, this is five thirty-nine Jefferson Avenue. I have a, do I have a few?
Am I flawed typo on the first page? Board does not have the jurisdiction to review.
Right, and should come out.
Yeah.
Right, and that's my, that would, that was actually my only comment as well, though, Charlie, you need to stick in all the dates.
Yep, will do.
Okay, now we have to discuss the variance, because, um.
So for number one, I suggest, the area variance will not result in undesirable change as the year yard does not abut any residential property.
And the benefit sort cannot be achieved by some other method because, um, because, because of the size of the property and the location of the existing structures. It is not substantial, but for the following reason, because I recall it was a tiny, what was the number? One point nine, oh, it is a large, it is, it is a substantial, it is substantial. But the area variance is not substantial, because although it is large, it does not impact any, um, any.
There's no neighborhood back there.
Right, there's.
Actually, it doesn't even any commercially, it doesn't act, uh, impact any other uses, because it doesn't even impact the Metro North Line. It's like, it has no impact how close you get.
Right, so any other, any other properties, leave it as any other properties.
Right.
The area variance will not have an adverse effect, because it is a, a pool, it is not adjacent to it. It does not abut any other property, it's more or less the same things we said above. And it is self-created, and then we don't have to say anything, that's it, and then number six should come out.
Yep.
And Abby should come out of the voting.
Yep.
Okay.
Brian, if he wants to partake, if he's caught up to speed.
Again, you know, I did watch the deliberations for that meeting, but I wasn't on board by then, so I would abstain for this.
Okay, anything else, David, do you have anything, or Meg, anything else?
No, fine.
All right, do you want somebody to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution with the changes that we just recommended.
Okay, David?
Yes.
Meg?
Yeah.
I vote yes as well, okay, that's adopted, that was quick, um, now, uh, just stopping for a second, Ashley just posted something in the chat, if you see that the, um, the response time for the NOI uh, for Van Ranst and Mamaroneck Avenue has been extended. And my question for you is, do we, my question for you, meaning the board members, is, uh, because neither of the next two, so we've approved this one, just leaving aside five and six be just in terms of time, so we can go as later, is not as latest as you guys want. Um, or as we all want, I should say, um, neither of the others is going to, they're both renewals of the next two, so if we don't go to it to them today, it almost, they're still going to continue to operate, it doesn't affect their ability to operate, uh, so, um, the, so moving, and so, well, so if we go to the circulation for lead agency, as, uh, Ashley posted that the, they've extended the time for the notice of intent until after our next meeting. So my question for all of you is, do we want to discuss them tonight anyway, since we have time and it could take some time? Or do we want to leave it for the next meeting? Thoughts? I would prefer to discuss it tonight, since we have some time, but.
No, I would prefer to do, this is a surprise to me, I'm glad they have extended it, I would like to take a look at the properties. Even if we don't want to be a lead agency, I would like to prepare my thoughts and comments to, for the board.
Okay, so you want to extend it.
I probably would agree with that, and Greta, I think, probably would want to participate.
Yeah, that is my thought, exactly.
Yeah.
And I'd rather, I'd rather use the time to maybe close out some of these old cases and get them off.
Well, so those two, okay, so we will definitely leave those two, that's what we've decided, so those will be, be on the next, on the agenda for the meeting in December, Brittany. Um, okay, so do we want to go to the, the next two items, everyone, you still good, time-wise?
What's the next one?
Um, four forty-eight Mamaroneck Avenue, Smash Burger.
Yeah, I, I have a comment, should I?
Wait, wait a minute, everybody, David, I was checking, David, you're okay with doing it?
I'm fine.
That's why I was, wanted to make sure, okay, yep, hold on, I'm opening my, hang on a second.
Yeah, I just got a phone.
Let me open mine, find mine.
Four forty-eight, there it is.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I believe, um, I largely made the note that fast casual is not in the code, and we should find a code, code term for the special permit. And I was headed for carryout restaurant, I understand it fits all of the criteria of carryout restaurant. I don't believe anybody on the board thought that this was a fast food restaurant. So what I suggest is for page two, that all we, we need is the definition of carryout restaurant. Um, we should leave in that you needed the variance for to be close to other establishments. But we don't need the definition of food service, we don't need the definition of fast food, all we need is the definition of carryout. And then, as you go down below in the second sentence of the last paragraph on page two, it should be classified as a carryout restaurant, not fast food.
I don't agree. Sorry, but, um, I don't think it's a carryout restaurant. So let's just.
Okay, so we'll, we'll stop there, it isn't prepackaged, it isn't pre, uh, pre-cooked. So it's not, I would not say it was a fast food. When I look at carryout, that's why I asked the gentleman, is it mostly to eat off the premises or on? And he thought it was mostly on, uh, mostly off. So I know that the operation is such that you go to the counter and you order, and then wait service brings it to your table. But the majority of the orders are cooked to order, not pre, pre-wrapped up and cooked to order for consumption off the premises, to me, that matches carryout restaurant exactly.
I don't think so as well, because a carryout restaurant really has, there is just, to me, a carryout restaurant is a carryout restaurant of food that is not, that is already too, already prepared, they prepare it to order. Um, it is, it is not, it is not the, a, a, a carryout restaurant is a sort of place where you go in and you say, I'll take three of those in the window and two of.
I'm sorry, no, 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 you can't, you can't add.
Meg?
Robin.
Yeah.
Robin, you're saying what it means to you, you have to look at.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the definition, I'm looking at the definition, Meg. For this retail sale of food and beverages, which may include grocery items for consumption off the premises. It doesn't talk about preparing food, it talks about.
It doesn't say, it doesn't say anything about preparing food.
Correct, it is already prepared food, it is not food that they're preparing, Smash Burger prepares the food. This is a fast food restaurant, there is no significant difference between a Smash Burger and a Burger King or a McDonald's or a, you order from Kentucky Fried Chicken, it's not prepared ahead of time. You go into Kentucky Fried Chicken and you order your chicken, that is a fast food restaurant.
As well, I'm not, I'm not looking at Kentucky Fried, and I'm not looking at McDonald's. I'm looking at the business model of Smash Burger. In the definition of carryout, it is silent on whether or not you do it cooked to order or there's limited items and they're cooking them all the same, it is silent on that. We can't add our own interpretation of what we think a carryout restaurant is. Out of all the code terms, this one, it, it is, Smash Burger for sure has certain items. I don't think almost anybody orders any one of them the way exactly that they are, and they don't have them all wrapped up in a heating bin to go out, every single item, they cook after you have ordered it. It may be the exact description on the menu, but they don't have three of them lined up and three bags of fries there. So, but I also would say that if it doesn't say anything about whether it has to be cooked to order or can't be cooked to order, we can't add that additional information to the definition.
Um, Meg, Meg, can I weigh in?
Saying so.
Can I, can I weigh in for just a second, basically going on the, uh, on the exact definition?
Okay.
One of the things that I see which distinguish the two entities is how you're purchasing. Uh, in restaurant fast food, it says that most of the sales are, uh, stand-up services. Meaning you go to a counter to order. Uh, the carryout, it almost seems like, you know, you could, you could walk in and pick it off a shelf yourself. Uh, and that's, and that's not Smash Burger's, uh, uh, business. I, I, I absolutely understand what you've been saying, Meg. Um, but I think that, you, you, you know, this restaurant is similar to something like a McDonald's or Burger King in the fact that you, you can't pick anything up off of anywhere, you have to go, it's, it's, it's a, it's a stand-up service to order. Even if they bring it to your table, and, and, and that, that right there is also a different, where you have to go uh, uh, and purchase it in that manner, and then they'll bring it to your table. Uh, so, so for me, I, I, I'm kind of leaning more towards the fast food, uh, than.
But it's not, it's not pre, it's not pre-wrapped, so, the thing is, it says that you're going to a counter-type installation, I agree, these are not great definitions. And this definitely should need some work, and it's difficult, but I don't see anything in the definition of carryout that is not, that is, does not describe Smash Burger. Um, because the grocery items, it just may, doesn't have to. Um, and I'm not even sure they may have some cookies or something, but it's a ready-to-consume food. It does not refer to how it's prepared or when it's prepared, ready-to-consume food and beverages from a counter-type installation. That's exactly what they have, they have, you're thinking, they mean a different. They mean a different counter type, but the words are not there, meaning, no, it's a counter type with racks and you just find what you like. It simply says a counter-type installation, they have a counter-type installation.
Well, hold it, hold it, hold it, counter-type, counter-type installation. There, it's not talking about buy, it's a counter-type installation for consumption. On the premises, and I'm wondering whether or not that's, y- y- you know, some type of, uh. Sit-down area at a counter, where there's a server in back of the counter. I, I think it's very confusing.
I know, but we can't, we can't, you're right, maybe it's like that, and, but this is where we run into gray areas, you can't, I think they mean this. If the words are not there, it's like, no, I think they mean a countertop in a, that you're sitting with stools at the counter, it doesn't say that.
But do they have, but does this Smash Burger have that? I haven't been in there.
When you go to Smash Burger, you go to a counter to purchase your food that you have ordered, you can order it online. I, you can order it, preorder it, from a phone or something. I don't know about their website or their software, but you order it and it's made to order, you go to a counter. And you then take it out to eat, or if you go to the counter and you place your order, you sit down and you put a number on your table. And then when your order is ready, they come over and they bring it to you at your table, so you're getting the table service there. Which is a requirement of carryout. Which is not a part of, it's, it's not a part of fast food. So the fast food restaurant doesn't talk about having table service. So I think that the carryout, first of all, I don't feel that it's in any way not describing Smash Burger. Um, you might feel like, I think it meant the intent was something different, but I, I think that's a little bit slippery. I think it does, there's nothing that is not in line with what Smash Burger does. And the main intent is that it's a combination of taking food off the premises. Or having the ability to sit and have it served to you at a table. And it has both of those components, those are, I think, are one of the major components for the carryout.
So, in, in your mind, is McDonald's a carryout or a fast food?
It would depend, I would have to look at the operation of that. Bi- building, of that mo- business model, because things evolve all the time, but when I go into thinking of McDonald's. There's usually a few hamburgers that are wrapped up in a line, and, and there's some fries all stuck on the heating thing. So those are in disposable containers already made in advance and wrapped up to go. And they also, it can't be carryout because it doesn't offer you, unless the building mo- the model change for a specific franchise. You don't get table service, so it would not be a carryout, McDonald's is, as I understand it, but. See, I don't think you can say all McDonald's are the same, or all this type of restaurant is, that's it's a fast food. We have to look at the specific language, look at the particular location that we have, and how their business model is set up. And decide if it matches one of these definitions.
I think that.
I definitely would not call it fast food because it has table service, which is almost as great as taking it off, off premises, you don't go. Yeah, so.
I don't, I don't think that, that there's anything in the definition of fast food that says you can't have table service. To me, the village was trying to set up three distinct ca- or more distinct categories of food service establishments. And as I read the definitions, the distinction between the fast food and the carryout. Is that the carryout, it is all pre-prepared, this is how I read it, retail, it uses the word retail sale. Which implies to me it is already packaged, normally when you use the word, nor, excuse me, Meg, before you say anything. Normally when you use the word retail, the word retail is a certain way of selling. Um, we, you don't think of, it, fast food is not defined as the retail sale. To me, retail sale comes from, as I see the definition, and yes, we all interpret, not like how you see it, how I see. You are explaining how you understand the interpretation, how you understand the definition, how you interpret the definition. And its application to this site, well, this definition talks about retail sale, having put in the word retail sale. Which isn't in the other definitions, it must have meant something, therefore, the definition must be retail sale, which is a counter. When you walk in, you take it out of the, the refrigerator container, you take it out of the counter that's sitting there. It is all pre-prepared, it is all ready to be taken and eaten. Whether it's taken off the premises or ta- eaten on the premises, it is taken to be eaten from packaged, from things that are packaged.
So what, what, what would that kind of thing smash be?
Excuse me, I do not think smash, it doesn't matter what I kind of restaurant I think it is, I'm only saying what this is. Uh, this to me, Smash Burger is a fast food, under these definitions, it is not clearly a sma- fast food, it is not clearly a. A carryout, it is a diff- it is like everything, the definitions are poor, and this looks like a. Now, if we do not care, which, and we're having this big debate. Um, then it seems to me, since it doesn't matter, we can simply say, whereas. We, it is difficult to determine exactly what the use is and the use is either as a carryout or fast food, period, and leave it at that.
I was gonna ask whether or not there's any benefits. Is there a benefit to one?
We, how about we give a special permit for the food establishment, can we do that?
We, we, if you recall, with chopped, this was a big issue, and you didn't want to do that. You wanted to fit it within one of the existing uses to call it something. So I think we have, we're going to be consistent, let's be consistent with.
No, I wanted to call it something that's in the code, I didn't want to call it a fast casual restaurant. Food establishment is, is, is it a term I find in the code? Or if you want to say, it, it, it's, I mean, I don't know how you say you're giving a special permit for something that's not quite this and not quite that.
Were you just shame, yeah, I guess.
Is there, is there a benefit, or is there an impact, uh, calling it one versus the other based upon the regulations of. Being within a certain amount of feet of Mamaroneck.
Restaurant does have a requirement that it can't be located within two hundred feet of another, but we've already made, given it that area variance.
But also, fast food, fast food, fast food, as I understand it, it was always not in the C1, it could be in the C2. McDonald's is a pre-existing, non-conforming before the code change. So that's why I consider other ones to make it compliant with the code as carryout restaurant. It's a restaurant, majority of it goes out, but you can also eat it there. Because otherwise, I feel that we are now opening something up and we're making fast food available, but this is a C2, so that, it isn't in this instance.
The only, the only thing, Brian, the answer to your question is, i- i- it can't, if as a fast food, it can't be within two hundred feet of another. But again, we've already given it that variance.
But carryout can't be done, but that's the same as for carryout, though, carryout also can't be within two hundred.
Okay, so then, then there is no difference, which is why I would say.
Then there's no difference, and there's, y- you know, so I'm just trying to see.
That's why I was suggesting we call it either, with one or the other, we can, we can say. Can you give, so what is the special permit finding, what is the special permit for, Charlie, do you have it in front of you, open the code definition? The code section on special permit?
Um, the, for food establishments?
Is, what is the co- what is the special permit for?
I think it's restaurants.
Well, that's what I'm asking, that's why I want Charlie to, that's why I asked Charlie.
Restaurants.
So that's what it's for, it's for the restaurant?
Yep, and then you go to the term restaurants.
Okay, so there's a restaurant.
Isn't it restaurant, well, I'm sorry, isn't it for restaurant plural? Or is it just for restaurant?
Just pulling it up now, so it is restaurants, subject to three forty-two dash forty-five.
And so we have in our definition several different restaurants, it doesn't have a capital R restaurant, it's restaurants. And I think we have three restaurants, and that's why they all.
Yes, but a food service establishment is not per se a restaurant, it is something different, so we can't call it a food service establishment. Since that does not define in the code as a restaurant, therefore, I think we need to say, I, I think, let's just say.
Call it a restaurant, not a brew pub.
But a restaurant implies. Is sit down, has sit down, that's different, retro, it can't be restaurant, no question that it's not a restaurant is defined in the code. I think where it is, it is either a such, it is, I think we have to say whether it is a, um, a fast food or a. And I don't see why, since the, since the code, since the special permit is for a restaurant, we're giving it for a restaurant, whether it's a fast food or a. Carryout, it doesn't matter, and therefore we'll call it whichever. I don't have it, unless, Charlie, you tell me there's a reason we can't do that, that's what I would suggest we do.
Nope, that sounds good to me, I see really no.
I'm not calling it a restaurant, it doesn't have table service, it's not a restaurant.
Meg, I'm suggesting it is either a, it is either a carryout or a fast food.
Okay.
Both of them would require the special permit, there's no difference otherwise, and we don't have to make the distinction, let's not make the distinction. Um, and just issue it as is. All right, so the, um, the other, there is one thing we need, is, there is a bigger change in the, um. We're not giving them any area variances.
Did it say area variance?
Yes, he's got a whole set of standards in here for area variance, we gave him an area variance years ago, the area variance was not time-limited. Therefore, all the ref- references pages three and four to variance, to the area variance to come out.
Right.
Um, then on page four, when we go to the following conditions, the special permit shall expire upon any change in the use. And based on what we said before, in the use, operation, intensity, or configuration of the premises.
So, just.
And we're going to use terminate, terminate rather than expire?
Yes, terminate, yes.
Um, I'm a little confused about the area variance section you're referring to, so if you could just be a little bit more specific, you said three and four.
On page three, on this page is three and four, it says be it further resolved. The board of reaffirms its findings, and these are all variance findings, they're not special permit findings, they should all come out.
Okay, just.
Or at least to the extent they're variance findings, I don't know, what are they?
So, the.
Wait, I'm sorry, I don't see the area variance.
I'll give you some insight as to why I put those in there, those were the special use permit findings that this board previously opined on in the original application.
Oh, I see, that's.
And I thought it best to put those in there since we're reclassifying the use, so that we kind of bring it full circle, it's fine if the board.
I think the special permit standard, yeah.
But we normally don't repi- repeat them, we normally don't repeat them for renewals, if you look at any other renewals we grant, we don't repeat all the findings.
Right, I, the only reason I did it, just so you know, and I'm fine with you taking it out, is because we're reclassifying the use. So, but if you feel as though it can come out, you know.
I would prefer to take them out.
Those, what is? Okay.
Um, so they may not be area varies, it was, this is probably why I was too confused what's, what's going on. Okay, going to finding A, then we go to finding B, uh, finding B has to change. Because it is not or approved by the building inspector, we had language that we've previously used, I know I've sent it to you before, Charlie. It's something to the effect of, um, that, as, ex- is that, any work done here under shall be seen strict compliance with the plans. As filed with this application, but there were no plans, I don't know if that there were, I guess there were, plans filed with this application, it's, except is expressly modified, but the conditions are in which they're not. Um, it would be minor changes that do not affect the. Any of the conditions, or the use, or the configuration, or anything like that. Um, as may be approved by the building inspector, I don't have the specific language, um, I'm trying to find an old resolution, but it's got to say something. It can't just be anything the building inspector wants to do.
Sure, so this was straight from the, this application's prior resolution, so that's why it's included.
Yeah, we've realized that those were not, those don't work anymore, that's, it's, we've now made the change, resolu- resolution. That some of that prior language, um, just doesn't work, I'm trying to find an, another resolution if I can. That's too new, an older resolution. So. Let's try this one. Now, it doesn't, sorry, I'm, I'm trying to find an old resolution that has some of that, but I don't have it, I can't find it. It is signed, by the way, another resolution for a restaurant with hours, so, uh, but that's irrelevant now. I don't actually see the language, though, that's usually language we put in an air, in a variance language, now, we don't usually put that in a special permit, that's what I'm looking at. It's not in any of the special permits, so I don't know that, we usually have that language where we have a variance.
So maybe that's what it was applicable to, because the prior resolution was.
Right, has a variance, right.
You can take that right out.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, and that was it. Um, Greg, Greg, so David, Brian, or Meg, anything else?
I've added Brian to the list of votes on this, unless you want to abstain, Brian?
No, I, I, you know, I had actually watched all of these, but because we, I actually weighed in on the definition a little bit, that's fine.
Great.
Okay, someone want to make a motion?
I'll move.
As it, as, as amended. I'll second that. Brian?
Hi.
Meg?
Yeah.
David?
Yeah.
And I vote yes also.
Okay.
Um, do you want to do the last one, it is ten twenty, I think we can do that quickly.
Um, I have no, it changes, anybody have any changes, let's find out, it's gonna take a while.
Which one? I, I do, but it's very quick, I just think that, uh, what is it, it's, um. Under the be it further resolved, section B.
For the record, note what application we're.
Oh, I didn't read, I'm sorry, case number, uh, four thirty-seven Ward Avenue is the next application.
Right, so the only, I have one question, but then I also, the only change I have is, uh, under item B. Uh, for be it further resolved, should we be consistent in the fact that this says. It will expire upon transfer of ownership.
Right, shall terminate upon a change in use or other things that we've said before, but I have some other comments, um, some other language comments. On page two, the, the clause that begins, whereas the application. Is, you see, is a special use permit renewal.
Yeah.
It's, it's for a special use permit renewal, it's an application is for a special use permit renewal. Okay, then we get to, and in the same, in the next paragraph, it should say, and. Into, and, and with said special use permits, and will continue, and the word two has to be inserted before the word comply with. Um, then under the be it further resolved, the special permit, all of that, it should just, all of it about being granted with the prior, it's a, this is no longer. Unless we're going to change it, we normally grant these, oh, we didn't discuss that, um, going back to the. Four forty-eight Mamaroneck Avenue, we did not discuss the term of the special permit. So, um, let's just, let's go back to that now, if we have to e- edit it, is, is, are we granting it for three years? Or the normal, if we're just extending it, right, just making it clear, we did not put a three-year renewal term on that, and there shouldn't have been one, but we didn't discuss it. So I'm just reminding everybody, so on this one, uh, there's no reason for renewal, again, because this is customs. Had they had their first year probation, we had no issues, and therefore.
No, this one, uh, which one are we talking about, we said we wanted.
About four thirty-seven Ward Avenue.
Oh, Barley.
Yeah.
No, four thirty-seven Ward Avenue is Alice Jane.
Of course, okay, we had, we discussed whether or not we wanted probationary period. We found that they had not been operating to the standards of the special permit until they came in for the application, and then they remedied that, but.
Which one are you talking about?
You're, you're moving to someplace else, I wasn't talking about Barley's at all. I wasn't talking about Barley's at all.
No, Robin, Meg.
Ward Avenue.
From the last meeting, Meg specifically pointed out that they had several code.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
And you had, and you had agreed, Meg had suggested that we put them on a three-year.
Okay, that's fine, I'm sorry.
It has to come back.
You're right, I forgot.
And I also would like to ask the question that I understand that we would be arbitrary and capricious if somebody else came in and it changed ownership and wanted to set up basically the same operation, and we should deny it. But when the standards for the special permit involve the owner of the company, that they had to have these licenses, that they have to have sent in information to police department and things like that. We cannot say that it has to come back for a special permit when it's in the change of ownership then. We're just hoping that the Village will do its due diligence to make sure that the, all the massage licenses are there and that things have been reported to the police correctly. There is no situation where you can ask for it to.
Well, Meg, let me just ask you a question on that. You know, when somebody buys something, if it's an asset purchase agreement, they're, they're, they're buying the business. Are you granting the, the, the special use permit to the business as an entity? Or the owner? You're, you're, you're giving it to the business, which is its own LLC probably. So I would think.
I actually, I would actually say, though, that the operations have significantly changed when the operations are based on the, the operators having the massage license.
Except that, remember, right now, there are two people who have licenses, right? They've given us those licenses. This, the ownership can stay, whatever the name of the applicant is, I don't remember the applicant. They can, other people can get massage licenses, and as long as the people have massage licenses, they can continue to operate. There's no, so if, so they have to be licensed, but we're not going to check in two years. I don't know how often they need to update those licenses. There's all kinds of requirements for keeping licenses.
So we're relying on our, on our village to enforce.
Now, we can put in here something, and we can put in that, we can put in something that, that, an expiry, you know, termination if any of the following, or if any of the, or if none of the, I don't know if you want to put something in, but I don't know how, what, because they can certainly change licensees, they can hire a new employee who's also licensed, and that would be fine. So I don't know that we can do anything, we could say like.
Okay, I.
Finding that license is required.
I asked the question.
No, no, I'm just suggesting, maybe we can put in something about, whereas, I think there was something in here about license required. Maybe we can say specifically that is a condition that, a, a condition can be that the people have licenses or something like that as required.
That's part of, well, that's part of the special permit standard, so. See, this is where it's odd, because I understand what you're saying, Brian, that you buy this asset, and you get the kitchen, and you get the tables, and the chairs, and the customer base.
Hold it, no, 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 no. No, you're buying the license to operate the business.
Right, you're not operating by just.
I understand, I understand that, I understand that. I guess, so let's say you changed hands and you bought a, do you get their liquor license? Or you changed ownership, you have to go and, and.
Well, it depends on if you're buying their LLC, or they're buying their, if you're literally buying their business with their operator, or you're just buying their assets.
But then I would say, but I would say then, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm joking, I'm very sorry. But I would say then that you're not changing the ownership, because you bought an LLC. The LLC is still the owner, so there was no change in ownership. You didn't create a new LLC that moved in.
Right.
I think that's getting way too, I don't think that's relevant, honestly.
Anyway, the relevant part was that it's so much based on the, the, the individuals that are running the business. And so I ask, but if there's no way that we rely on the village to make sure that things are enforced correctly.
Yeah. Well, you know, Meg, I'll, I'll give you another situation, which I've seen. People sell their businesses, but stay on as employees to manage and run the business. There's literally no, no change, but there's, there's a change of ownership. Technically, people just cash out of their business and continue to run it. So I think that it's, it gets very difficult, and we could go down the wrong road with that.
I suppose. I always thought that you could, you could do it with change of ownership, but if it was basically the same operation.
It's the same owner, it's the same owner.
You know. Anyway, let's move on.
Okay, David, you have, or Brian, do you have any comments to the to the resolution?
Not, not to the resolution, no.
Dave, do you have anything?
No, I don't.
Someone want to make a motion? I'll make a motion to adopt. As, as edited. Okay. All right, Meg?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. That is the last item on the agenda, since we are postponing the consideration of the circular, the notice for circular, for the notice of intent for lead agency. And let us adjourn and see you all in a couple of weeks.
So, good night, everyone.
Have a great Thanksgiving, everybody.
Good night, thank you.
Good night.